Okay, that would be Mariah Fontaine. Do you know if they're online? And we don't see her, so...
Okay. Let's come on down in there.
We can start with R1. And this is a proclamation declaring the month of April as Records and Information Month in Culver City.
Is this you?
Yeah.
Test. So, uh... This is the City of Culver City Proclamation, Records and Information Management Month 2025. Whereas, records and information are vital assets of any organization and essential for accountability, transparency, good governance, and effective service delivery; and whereas, Records and Information Management Month, RIM, first recognized in 1995 as National Records and Information Management Day, is observed annually in April to recognize the critical role that record professionals play in maintaining and protecting information, as well as the significance of efficiently organizing records; and whereas, proper records and information management ensures that records are accurate, accessible, secure, and preserved for historical and legal purposes; and whereas, the advancement of technology and the increasing complexity of information structures demand a heightened commitment to professional records management practices; and whereas, records and information management professionals in Culver City throughout each city department contribute daily to the efficiency, organization, and integrity of city operations, helping to safeguard public trust and ensure compliance with laws and city procedures; and whereas, the Goals and Records and Information Management Month include raising awareness about the importance of promoting best practices in document handling and retention, proper information management, and celebrating the professionals who support the responsible stewardship of data and records. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City, California, hereby proclaim April 2025 as Records and Information Management Month in Culver City and encourage all residents, businesses, and city departments to recognize and support the importance of effective records and information management practices. Dated this 14th day of April 2025, signed by myself, the Vice Mayor, and the two council members who are here right now. Would you like to say anything, Tiana?
Yes, please. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Tiana Allen, Deputy City Clerk in Records Management Professional here in Culver City. Happy Records and Information Management Month. Here in the city, we value records management because it helps us respond to public records requests, retain industry knowledge, saves the city money, and ensures documentation of the city's accomplishments, as well as helps the city administrators and executives find information needed for decision-making. At home, records management is just as important, especially when it comes to preserving vital records, like your legal documents, so your birth certificates, your passports, and licenses, and wheels, any health records, like insurance information, or medical records, and other important documents, like your property deeds, car registration, and tomorrow is tax day, so like tax documents. And I'm not sure if anyone else felt this earthquake today, but today is a good reminder that keeping these types of documents organized and in a safe place should always be at the top of your priority list. So I encourage everyone, whether you're a small business or a resident, to add records management to your spring cleaning to-do list this month and beyond. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation declaring April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day in Culver City.
Great, we have some people coming up to join me for, or join us for Earth Day? Okay. All right. Proclamation for Earth Day 2025. Whereas, the global community faces challenges such as health issues, food and water shortages, pollution, and economic struggles; and whereas, all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth and opportunity; and whereas, we are all caretakers of our planet and have an obligation to combat climate change and environmental degradation to preserve the earth's beauty and resources; and whereas, it is necessary to broaden and diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success; and whereas, this year marks the 55th anniversary of the Earth Day movement, and the City of Culver City encourages all businesses, institutions, and individuals to celebrate the earth and commit to caring for the planet and its resources. And whereas, the theme for 2025 is "Our Power, Our Planet," with a focus on renewable energy, and there are many ways to take action, including special events, participating in cleanups, or creating your own Act of Green. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City, California, hereby proclaims April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day in Culver City, and encourages people in the city to combat climate change and environmental degradation, support green economy initiatives, and to encourage others to undertake similar actions. Dated this 14th day of April 2025, sign the mayor and council members.
Just like to thank the city for this proclamation on Earth Day, and, uh...
Who are you?
And my name is Dan Morikle. I'm representing Biona Creek Renaissance, and if you're interested in being involved in the cleanups, or any of the educational events that Biona Creek Renaissance puts on, just go to bionacreek.org, and you can find out all you need to know about those kind of events.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay. I'm sorry?
We had a speaker for R3. We want to check on the time.
Oh. No, we don't see her.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Hey, everybody, we have a proclamation for National Arab American Heritage Month. If anyone wants to come to the front to be a part of it. Fantastic. Anyone can come, anyone that wants to...
Everyone.
To honor Arab American Heritage Month.
All right. Whereas, for over a century... Whereas, for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society, in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, culture; and whereas, since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends, while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And whereas, they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity, and faith, and creed, that have added strength to our great democracy; and whereas, the history of Arab Americans in the U.S. remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate, in the forms of crimes and speech, which must be combated through education and awareness. And whereas, Arab Americans lend their rich heritage to enhance our community, playing a vital role in contributing to all aspects of life in Culver City; and whereas, we all desire to see a peaceful and diverse society, where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Culver City Council of the City of Culver City, California, hereby proclaims April 2025 as National Arab American Heritage Month, and celebrates the diaspora, and honors the generations of residents and immigrants who have enriched our nation's narrative. Dated this day, the 14th of April 2025, signed by the mayor, vice mayor, and two of our council members.
Just wanted to say good evening and thank you to Honorable Mayor O'Brien, Vice Mayor Puza, and esteemed council members for this proclamation. My name is Eddie Baskarun, and I was born in Alexandria, Egypt, and tonight, standing with me, you have Steve and Youssef, who are from Syria, and Ali from Afghanistan. Together, on behalf of the Middle Eastern community, we want to thank and express our thanks to the city. Coming from regions where freedom and opportunity are not always promised, we deeply value the liberties this country and this community provide. You truly understand the meaning of freedom when you've experienced life without it. We are especially grateful for Chief Sims and his command staff for their continued commitment to diversity and for always welcoming new perspectives on how we can better serve our city. Their openness and leadership have truly made a difference in our police department. We are committed to serving this diverse city with professionalism, dignity, and a spirit of service above self. Thank you.
And finally, a proclamation declaring April 25th as Arbor Day in Culver City.
We have any arborists here, or tree huggers? Wonderful. The City of Culver City Proclamation Arbor Day 2025. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees; and whereas, this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world; and whereas, the City of Culver City has received Tree City USA recognition since 2017 from the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with the USDA Forest Service and National Association of State Foresters, and is one of 3,600 recognized communities from all 50 states; and whereas, through its Urban Forest Master Plan, Culver City has expressed its commitment to fostering a robust and resilient urban forest today and in the future, so that our community will continue to enjoy the important environmental and social benefits. And whereas, trees moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, and provide habitat for wildlife; and whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, cut heating and cooling costs, and beautify our community; and whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal and hope for the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Culver City, California, hereby proclaims Friday, April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in Culver City, dated this 14th day of April 2025, signed by myself, the Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers Fish and Vera. Would you like to say something else, Sam?
Just thanks again for your concern for the environment. I'm Dan Morikle, representing Biona Creek Renaissance, at bionacreek.org.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to say something. The Public Works Department would like to let everyone know that Enviro Fest is coming up on May 3rd, and it is in celebration of both Earth Day and Arbor Day, and we will be collecting e-waste, we will be giving away compost, and we'll be giving away 100 trees, fruit trees, for anyone who first come, first served. So please come and join us, it starts at 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's outside the Vendi Museum, down off, but... And I also wanted to give everyone a heads up, since we're talking about trees, that we're getting, that were, hopefully, there was a potential art project that focuses on trees coming to council in the next month, so hopefully, that'll be approved, and we'll see that come to fruition soon. Thanks.
All right, you know how it goes. Three, two, one. And then this way, three, two, one.
Maria, poor Maria.
Oh.
Poor Maria. She couldn't be here tonight, could she? But I, um... No. The proclamation for Arab American? Yes. Yes. Okay, great. Ready? Yes, okay, great. Thank you. Hi, good evening, I apologize I was late, I had to put my babies to sleep, but I did want to come and thank you guys for the Arab American designation for this month. It is extremely important, it's important to our community, it's important to our allied communities, for the recognition, and I really do hope that that is also just the first step for the City Council to continue to recognize the Arab American community in Culver City. The hard work that the community does for Culver City, the presence that the community has in Culver City, it is so important, and it should not be overshadowed, and while this proclamation is a very important step, I hope it's not the only step that this City Council takes, because the Arab American community in Culver City is hurting, and its allied communities are hurting. And every time, you know, we come here and we talk about the pain that we're feeling, and this is an acknowledgement of that, it's a small part of an acknowledgement of that, and we hope that that acknowledgement continues. So again, thank you, and I hope that you, again, continue to see the Arab American community and the impact that it has in Culver City, and the importance that it has, and continue to recognize it and acknowledge it, and acknowledge the pain and suffering that goes along with it as well. Thanks.
And, one, really quickly, we got some gifts from the Sepulveda Transit Corridor Partners, and they'd like a photo with this, would you like to make a quick statement?
Do you want to take public now?
Should we do it with the public comment? They want to get a photo with this. Should we... Okay, let's get the photo, and then we'll do the comment.
Awesome.
Hi, I'm Alan Bingham with... Okay.
All right, three, two, one. Perfect.
Can anyone please rise for the pledge? Okay, we have nothing to report out of closed session, and it's been a minute since we've been here. I'm going to start with the oral statement of land acknowledgement. The City of Culver City formally acknowledges that the land we inhabit today is the ancestral land of indigenous peoples who have lived here for millennia. The City of Culver City honors the Gabrieleño people, past, present, and future, and recognizes their enduring connection to this land and its original caretakers. We are committed to supporting and uplifting the Gabrieleño people, and to fostering a deeper understanding of the histories and identities of all indigenous peoples in this region. We encourage all residents and visitors to join us in respecting and caring for this land. The City affirms its support for the rights of these indigenous communities, and for the preservation of their cultural legacies. Thank you. Okay. Any reports from CBCs or staff?
We do. We have J. Marvin Campbell from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, representing the committee.
Great.
Good evening, I'm J. Marvin Campbell, speaking on behalf of the BPAC, and this is regarding the stretch of national between Washington and Jefferson. It's a dangerous stretch of road, we've had a lot of accidents, we had a recent fatality there, and I'm just here to implore you to put this issue on your agenda, and try and do something about fixing that particular stretch of road, because it's very dangerous. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay. Then, joint public comment.
Before that, the city clerk has another announcement.
Great.
Let me pull up what I need to. It's CBC time. Our commissions, boards, and committees, our annual recruitment period is started. It started April 1st, it goes through May 12th, we are looking for different members to join us, we have all sorts of different positions, and if you see down below, there's a QR code that if anyone has their camera out and ready to take a picture, we can, it'll take you directly to culvercity.org/serve, which you can also find directly, and I had this up a moment ago, let me see if I can swap it out. Commissions, boards, and committees, it puts you right here. And while a lot of the positions are for residents only, there are some different bodies that allow for members who aren't necessarily residents, but sometimes they can be a business position, or a landlord who might not live in the city but has property here. So there are 27 openings on all of these bodies listed here, so if there's something that interests you, you go to culvercity.org/serv, and you can apply for a position online, or download the CBC application, so you can fill it in by hand. And we'll accept all of the applications, again, through May 12th. There are some important dates, if you apply, on June 2nd, there's a meet and greet, and then there's an interview session with the council members, and on June 9th, that's when the appointments will be made, and on June 26th, appointed members must attend an Ethics and Brown Act training. So this is a conflict of interest training, and it kind of gives you an idea of what your responsibilities will be when you're on the board, or commission, and this is required training for anyone who's on our CBCs every other year. So council members, if you haven't taken it in a while, please join us. And also, the same goes for people who are members now who haven't taken it in, this is their second year. Thank you.
Thank you, and I forgot that we have to give our own reports. Before we get started, I do want to go first on one thing. If everyone hasn't heard, it was announced that our city manager, John Nakbar, will be retiring at the end of this year, and there's going to be a lot of time for thank yous and congratulations, but, you know, I just want to kick this off with a brief thank you, John, and all the hard work you've done over the years, and I also want to take this opportunity to request from my colleagues, agendizing a search for John's replacement, if I can get nodding heads on that. Okay, thank you.
For nodding heads.
Councilmember Fish?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo the sentiments of my colleague, you will be missed, city manager, and just, we've all learned a lot from you, and I continue to learn from you, so thank you for your service for so many years to our city, and we'll have more time for that, I know, but... I also wanted to wish everyone, and especially our Jewish friends and neighbors, a Chag Beisach Semir. I hope you have a meaningful celebration with your friends and family this Passover. I was able to attend two Satyrs, one at the Silver Lake JCC, put on by faith and community leaders alongside Vice Mayor Puza, and one last night at our very own Temple Akiba. Both were delightful, it's always been my favorite holiday, but it's taken on new meaning this year. The holiday marks a time when the Jewish people were scapegoated, taken as slaves, and then exiled from their homes. There are many parallels to the extraordinary moment we're in right now, as federal officials are taking people off the street in broad daylight and sending them to prison without due process. The president's using the guise of combating antisemitism to disappear anyone who attends a protest he doesn't like, or says something he doesn't agree with. That includes Mahmoud Khalil, who's being deported despite being a lawful permanent resident, just for organizing a demonstration, Rumesa Oz Turk, who was detained by ICE after wearing a pro-Palestinian op-ed, and sent to Louisiana, where she's now facing deportation, and Lilo Juarez Zefarino, a farm worker and labor organizer who is detained while driving his partner to work and is being held in a detention center with no charges and no warrant, among many other immigrants and organizers, and that should really terrify all of us, I'm sure it does, and it should continue to center the work we need to do here to uplift the human rights and dignity of every person, and protect and grow the diversity that makes our city so vibrant. Speaking of which, I attended the hands-off protest here in Culver City, which was incredible to witness, I'm so grateful for all the organizing around it, and it was amazing how organically it spread, and I've never seen that many people in downtown Culver City, and actions like those remind us that we're not alone, and they reinvigorate us for the years of resistance and hard work we have ahead of us. A few quick announcements, there are two fun ways to celebrate Earth Day that I know of here in Culver City, the Elrene Cohen Elementary is hosting their annual Earth Fest celebration on Saturday, the 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the Alenda Earth Day celebration is coming up, encouraging families to walk, bike, bus, and scoot to school, it's on the 22nd, and the Academy of Visi... Sorry, the AVPA, Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, is having their Spring Music Celebration at Robert Frost Auditorium on Wednesday, the 23rd, at 7:00 p.m. Also, just want to share that Backpacks for Kids is having their Garden Tea fundraiser on the 27th of April, lots, lot happening in April, from 1:00 to 3:30 at the Vendi Museum, and Backpacks for Kids, for those who don't know, provides nutritious, child-friendly, easy-to-prepare food each week to children, so they don't have to deal with food insecurity on the weekends. And yes, echoing staff, please do apply for commission, board, or committee seat. I served on the advisory committee on housing and homelessness for two years, and it was just a fantastic way to deepen my involvement, and it's a great way for folks to make a difference in your community, your voice matters, and if you have any interest, I really do encourage you to apply. And if you have any interest, I really do encourage you to apply. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera.
Thanks, Mayor. For John, I know there'll be plenty of times for goodbyes and thanks, but I just wanted to say on a personal, you've been my, that one constant and has always been there. I've got so much guidance and knowledge and support from you. You truly will be missed, but I know, I know where you live, and we'll come knocking on your doors. But like I said, there'll be plenty of time for goodbyes and thanks, but thank you so much for all you do for us and for the city. Now, on to PRCS, staff members and everything that they've done. I was, opportunity to attend Town Plaza Concert, I believe it was DJ Vasquez, playing Cuban music and dancing and, no, Valdez, I believe his name is. Yeah, Anthony Valdez. Great, great, great time, as well as the Easter egg party in the park. You guys continually knock it out of the park, no pun intended. But thank you all so much for everything you do. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Plus four on the sentiment to thanking the city manager for your service to the city. Appreciate your guidance and wisdom, and obviously more to come on that. It has been a minute since we last met, so to all those who celebrated Happy Ramadan, to all those who are currently celebrating Happy Passover, and to all those who will celebrate Happy Easter. April 11th was National Pet Day. It's a day dedicated to honoring the joy and companionship that pets bring into our lives. It's also a time to raise awareness about the countless animals in shelters waiting for their forever home. So hopefully you got an opportunity to show your pet, if you have one, some extra love or consider adopting or supporting a local shelter or animal in a local shelter in need. April is also Natural Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. It's a time to raise public consciousness about sexual violence, support survivors, and promote prevention efforts. Through education, advocacy, and open conversations, we can challenge harmful norms, support healing, and work together to end sexual violence. Two Sundays ago, I was proud to join a bunch of local, state, and federal leaders and Film LA to advocate for keeping film production in Los Angeles. In particular, I stressed our Assembly Member Isaac Bryan and Assembly Member Rick Ziber's Film Tax Credit Bill, which would incentivize film, TV, and commercial production back to Los Angeles. And Culver City is a major player in the entertainment industry, and this definitely impacts our city. And last, I have been meeting with many members of our community who have questions about the budget and the structural deficit, and there have been some very optimistic conversations as well as some very difficult conversations. And I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to dialogue about this issue that I take very seriously. These are tough times and decisions, and I know we're going to discuss this later, but I want to make it clear that I'm committed to finding funding and revenue streams for the Jubalo Village in addition to the growing need for infrastructure projects across the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll be quick. I echo everything my colleague said. And thank you to Vice Mayor Puza for participating in the Keep Film in LA rally. I'm a TV and film person, and in the past year, I probably worked about 60% of what I normally work. It's real. And I know myself and people like me are really struggling. So anything you can do to write our Congress people, our Assembly Members, our Senators to get that tax bill passed, it would be really beneficial, and not just to people who work in the industry, but it hits Main Street, too. Our businesses in Culver City have fewer customers because fewer people in this industry town are going to work. And I look forward to participating and uplifting that message until we get that help. I believe on Friday, I will be planting a tree with the Public Works Department in Fox Hills Park. I'm excited about that. I need to get that confirmation, but Arbor Day is a great opportunity for us to, you know, think about and take action and plant trees. And it sounds like we have a lot of trees to give away. So let's take advantage of that. This week, on Wednesday, at both, from 12:30 to 2:00, at Bets Memorial Building in the Rotunda Room, and also that same day, from 6:00 to 7:30 in Sid Cronenthal Park, Room A, the city's going to be hosting a session on our Racial Equity Action Plan. So it's an opportunity for you to learn about that and give input. I hope you can take part in that. And then finally, I just want to thank our Parks, Rec, and Community Services Team for the excellent extravaganza that we had on Saturday. It was a pre-Easter, Easter egg hunt and more. Our police, our Parks and Rec, Kiwanis Club, and Culver City Youth Volunteers all put on a fantastic celebration. Bets Park was packed with kids and families, and it was a real great community event. I was happy to be there. Councilmember Fish, I saw there as well. I'm not sure if anyone else made it, but it was really, really cool. And these are the things I love about Culver City. And that's all I got. Thank you. Start with joint public comment.
Great. So we will get ready to call the speakers. Okay. First, I'm going to read the statement regarding hate speech. Members of the public have a right to speak on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. However, this council strongly denounces hate speech and does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Culver City prides itself on its diverse community and inclusion of all persons. We are committed to creating a safe space in the city and in these chambers where members of our community feel included and respected. And we will start to call. We currently have, I think, 17 speakers? 18?
All righty, I'll go ahead and call the first 10 speakers so folks can get prepared. First up, we have Christopher Michelle, Alan Bingham, Bernard Parks Jr., Mark Hertzkovitz, Maria Beg, Dan Morical, Janine Wisniewski-Stalen, Ronald Davis, Mariah Fontaine, and Marcy Vaughn. So our first speaker is Christopher Michelle.
I'm Mayor and Vice Mayor. My name's Chris Michelle. I'm the co-chair for sponsorships for Culver City Pride, and I'm here tonight to advocate for Culver City Pride and request that the city council agendize an item to include direct financial support for Pride rather than in-kind donations for the 2026 budget and for Pride to be put on the permanent sponsor list for the city. Pride is not just a celebration, it's a vital affirmation and protest of Culver City's commitment to LGBTQ+ visibility, safety, and belonging. This year, companies have been hesitant to support Pride events due to the presumption that it could be a DEI initiative, which the current administration has been actively targeting, along with general economic instability. By investing directly in Pride, the city sends a powerful message that our values and of diversity and inclusion are backed by action. Thank you all for your time and consideration. I appreciate all of your leadership in making a Culver City that welcomes everyone.
Christian, just so you know, we're, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Puza and I are seeing that item in the Special Events Subcommittee.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alan Bingham, followed by Bernard Parks Jr.
Good evening, Culver City. I'm Alan Bingham with Metro Program Management for Sepulveda Transit Corridor. I have to read a little statement prior to my colleague coming up. Because Metro has not completed a CEQA review, the information contained herein does not constitute or evidence and approval by Metro of or commitment of Metro to any action for which prior environmental review is required under CEQA. Metro retains the absolute sole discretion to make decisions under CEQA, which discretion includes, without limitation, deciding not to proceed with the project, known as the no-build alternative, and deciding to approve the project. There will be no approval or commitment by Metro regarding the development of the project unless and until Metro, as the lead agency, and based upon information resulting from the CEQA environmental review process, considers the impacts of the project. For official information regarding the project, please visit Metro's project website at www metro.net/projects/spolvedacorridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bernard Parks Jr., followed by Mark Hertzkovitz.
Good evening. I'm Bernard Parks Jr. I'm with Sepulveda Transit Corridor Partners. I'm reading a letter into the record tonight regarding this council's endorsement of Sepulveda Transit Corridor Partners Alternatives 4 and 5. Mayor O'Brien, Councilmember McMoran, Puza, Vera, and Fish. On behalf of the dozens of partners that make up Sepulveda Transit Corridor Partners, I'm extending a heartfelt thank you to each and every one of you for endorsing both of our heavy rail subway alternatives, which are known as Alternatives 4 and 5, that are designed to ease traffic on the 405 freeway with the capability of getting you, your staff, your constituents, and every rider from the West Side to the Valley in as little as 20 minutes. Imagine having dinner at one of your many fine restaurants nearby and being able to have dessert as far away, as far away as Van Nuys that same night without having to experience whatever would await you on the 405. You are the first government body to endorse these plans, and you should rest assured that you have put your support in a good place. Since we signed with Metro to develop options in 2021, this group has and will continue to look for every possible way to make this project better for those we seek to help. We'd like to partner with the Culver City Hall family and the people you represent to ensure that any questions about Alternatives 4 and 5 are answered as we continue to move through this process. Please feel free to reach out to me or any member of the STCP to get the information that you need. Respectfully, Bernard Parks Jr. and the rest of the STCP family. Thank you guys so much. And you have your sweatshirts. Councilmember McMoran, please make sure that these guys give you your sweatshirt. Thank you.
I think we're one, Mr. Parks, I think there was one short. There was only four sweatshirts, so.
Okay. We will have one on the way then.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Hertzkovitz, followed by Maria Beg.
Good evening. My name is Mark Hertzkovitz, longtime Culver City resident and very concerned citizen. I'm here tonight to speak against the Jubalo Village project and the 16-plus million-dollar add to the city's budget. As you know, the city is in a financial crisis, a literal fiscal emergency. In fact, you're about to discuss an emergency declaration, an emergency tax, and a ballot to raise taxes. And at the same time, adding $16 million to the upcoming budget for this Jubalo Village project, it's absolute lunacy. Putting this project on the budget just adds to the emergency. This project could bankrupt our city. This project could cause irrefutable harm to all Culver City citizens. It could empty our reserves and leave us vulnerable to all kinds of future issues, like in the case of a real emergency, fire, flood, earthquake, et cetera, which we clearly need to be prepared for and have ample reserves for. Short version, please, I implore you, remove this $16 million Jubalo Village project from the budget and save our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Beg, followed by Dan Morical.
I'll start. Okay, thanks. Hi, good evening. Me again. I wanted to start with Councilmember Fish. Thank you for your comments just now. It echoes the exact sentiment I wanted to discuss today, was that the current political climate and its attack on our freedom of speech is horrifying. What we see happen to Mahmoud Khalil could happen to any one of us that are residents here in Culver City. It's happening to our UCLA students, many of which are residents here in Culver City. And when we think about, again, this Arab-American proclamation and the dedication and the support we want to provide to our Arab-American community, it starts with protecting our Arab-American community and making sure that the Arab-American community and its allies are protected, that their freedom of speech is protected, that our students are protected. So I especially encourage the council, when we come back to, I know there was some discussion previously about the sanctuary city and the new declaration, or you know, however, whatever you call it, you know, that discussion, when it comes back around, I really do hope that the city considers including protection of our freedom of speech and especially of our pro-Palestinian communities, especially of our Muslim communities, especially of our Arab communities, because we are under attack. We are being attacked, and we are currently fighting for those freedoms still here and in Gaza. The genocide is ongoing. There was a little bit of pause. There was a brief moments of peace for the people of Gaza, and now it has been amplified. It is continuing, and thousands and thousands of people are being killed every day. So again, I reiterate my request for a ceasefire resolution from this council. It is important. It is meaningful. It does make a difference, and it could potentially be the step that declares a long-lasting ceasefire resolution, because the people of Gaza are suffering, and they are being killed, and they are being slaughtered, and your Arab-American communities in Culver City are suffering directly because of it. Because I assure you, everybody that was up here today to take a picture for Arab-American proclamation is directly impacted by the ongoing genocide, and they are hurting. And this council can do something to try and ease that pain. Thank you.
My name is Dan Morical. I'm a retired environmental engineer and a Culver City homeowner. I also serve on the Advisory Council for Renaissance, Biona Creek Renaissance. Our plastic addiction crisis is even more insidious than I originally believed. In addition to plastic polluting our air when it's made, polluting our waterways and killing our marine life when it's discarded, and invading our bodies, I recently discovered that we now have plastic rain. Just do an internet search on plastic rain and find out more about it. Biona Creek Renaissance has given Culver City an excellent opportunity to address this plastic addiction. Not only have they done the research on what is working in other cities, they have actually submitted a draft rewrite of the Culver City ordinances using these best practices. I urge you to take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janine Wisniewski-Stalen, followed by Ronald Davis.
Am I allowed to touch this? In the past, we were like, no! Big shock. Yeah, get zapped to the floor. First of all, John, no! I wanted to, before I speak about what I came about, I wanted to congratulate Culver City for the hands-off rally. It was organized by our own, very own Jamie Wallace, and the amount of people who came, like 2,000, was amazing. So thank you for everybody for coming to that. It was invigorating. And also, Film in L.A. was mentioned, and our plight with the, with the entertainment industry was mentioned here. You know, I serve on two SAG-AFTRA committees, and one is to try to keep entertainment jobs here in California. So please, help us keep entertainment jobs in California and hire union workers. Since we'll be talking tonight about legal services for our community members, I wanted to take a moment to highlight I wanted to take a moment to highlight a vital and often under-the-radar resource. And it's called the L.A. County Law Library. Now, a lot of people have not heard of this building. It's across from the courthouse downtown L.A. Every year, they serve over 120,000 people across L.A. County. And they field more than 66,000 legal inquiries, many from people who cannot afford an attorney. And here's the most powerful part. These access to justice services are completely free. Because access to information is access to justice. Whether you're facing eviction, starting a business, navigating family law, or simply trying to understand your rights, L.A. Law Library offers help, from walk-in and virtual reference assistance to on-demand legal classes, live workshops, Ask a Lawyer Zoom Town Halls. They meet people where they are. They also provide consultations, continuing legal education, and multilingual support. So in a time when navigating the legal system can feel impossible for many, L.A. Law Library is a lifeline. So please help spread the word about this essential public service
Your time has expired. Thank you.
that empowers thousands every year with knowledge, confidence, and access to justice. And they are at lalawlibrary.org. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ronald Davis, followed by Mariah Fontaine.
Ready?
Yeah.
Good evening. I would like to commit the City Council for honoring our Arab residents this evening. Also, I would like to commend the council for its sanctuary city policy, its racial equity action plan, and strong opposition to hate speech and hate activities. And I'd like to also commend the City Council for continuing to work hard and long to try to build significant housing for our houseless. But these notable actions are not enough, I'm afraid, because students from elementary to college are now terrorized daily by the Trump administration simply for speaking out against genocide. They are terrorized by the Trump administration's growing crusade to turn our nation into a police state. Given these facts, the Culver City Council should expand its sanctuary city framework to include the protection of those residents criticizing Israel, indeed, all of our residents who participate in protests, because they are now subject to government intimidation and arrest. What's more, the council should clearly define its anti-hate policy so as not to confuse the free speech criticism of the current Israeli war effort with antisemitism. Antisemitism is on the rise in the United States. No attack on Jewish people as Jews or Muslim people because they are Muslims can ever be tolerated. But to criticize Israel is not antisemitism, just like it's not Islamophobia to criticize theocratic dictatorships in the Middle East. To protest America's complicity in genocide is not a threat to our national security. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mariah Fontaine, followed by Marcy Bond. Not seeing her in chambers or online. Our next speaker is Marcy Bond, followed by Eli Glad.
Good evening, City Council members. I frequently see posts by the Culver City Public Works on Facebook encouraging people to put the dead leaves from their yards in the green bin. Dead leaves are important for composting. They're also important for insects that use them for wintering over. But if you are having your leaves removed from your yard, please ask your gardeners to put the leaves into the green bin instead of blowing them into the street. This would be greatly helpful to our composting. Also, this past Friday, there was a security scare at the high school. As I live right by there, I saw the six-to-eight cop cars that showed up because they called the police force in, as they should. And the police spent at least an hour, probably an hour and a half, sweeping the campus with both humans and canines to ensure the safety of our students, the teachers, and staff. And we greatly appreciate all that they do to keep all of us in this city safe. Remember this when you are looking at the budget. People move here not just because of the wonderful community, but also because it's known for being safe. Safety has a lot to do with the ability of the police force, has a lot to do with the ability of the police force to train and to respond quickly. As our population grows, we must continue to prioritize the police budget to ensure its residents and the people who visit here's safety. Also, we don't have the funds for Jubalo. We don't have an extra $4 million. That's coming out of our reserves. This will just make the budget hold deeper and deeper, even if we do the emergency tax. It has to stop. You have to think about the residents who already live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eli Glad. Not seeing them in chamber or online. Our next speaker is Steve Siegel, followed by Ronald Ostrin. Not seeing them in chamber or online. Ronald Ostrin. Not seeing them online or in the council chamber. Our next speaker is Jim Shanman, followed by Thomas Lester.
Greetings, Council. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Spectacular. I am here to remind everybody that next Tuesday, as Councilmember Fish mentioned, is the Alenda Street Earth Day Celebration. We're very excited about this. It's the first time we've done anything even remotely close to this as part of the Safe Streets to School program. Alenda Street will be closed to car traffic starting at 6 o'clock in the morning on Tuesday, April 6th. I'm sorry, Tuesday, April 22nd. The event will be from 7:00 till 9:00 a.m. The Open Streets event is part of the citywide Culver City Safe Streets to School program. We encourage families to rethink their streets to school in an effort to reduce car traffic, create safer and cleaner communities. We encourage families to plan ahead. Alenda will be closed. There's plenty of alternative routes. We have a map posted on the website at ccwalkandroll.com/Alenda. It is designed, the event in general, we're hoping to broaden conversations on safety, transportation, and environmental issues. We are encouraging families to park a few blocks away, drop their kids off at Overland or at Alenda and Culver, or any of the side streets such as Harder, or Limble, or Barman, and either walk with their children or have their kids walk to school the rest of the way. We will have volunteer-led walking school buses starting at Coons and Culver. We will also be having volunteer-led bike buses starting at Centonella, coming down Culver, and then heading up Alenda to the schools. The schedule for that is also on the website. We are trying our best to get promotion out there. I know in the immediate neighborhood, we made sure there were postcards on everybody's doorstep so that residents are aware of what's happening. We've been in the school district newsletters, on their social media sites. We are having ongoing conversations about getting additional outreach. I am all open to additional ideas on how best to spread the word. We will be at the middle school open house this coming week, which will be on Wednesday, spreading the word to the parents directly for that. And we just want to make sure that everybody has
Your time has expired. Thank you.
And make sure you have any comments. You're free to reach out to me directly at jim@walkmore.com. Thank you.
I now see Ronald Ostrin online, so we're going to go ahead and circle back to Ron Ostrin.
Good evening, Council. This is Ronald Ostrin. I hope you're all well today. The theme I want to talk to today is about the unprecedented times that we are in. I've lived in Culver City nearly all my life. I've seen recessions. I've seen meltdowns. I've never seen anything like this, and I think the council needs to be aware that we may be in our in treacherous times. The recent stock market crash that was caused by the tariffs was remarkable. But perhaps the most remarkable thing is that the usual flight to safety is 10-year Treasury notes, which means money crowds in and the interest rate goes down. But the opposite happened. The interest rates went up. And we've kind of lived in a bubble for most of our time here, where the U.S. had the world's reserve currency, and we were considered the place of safety. That is no longer the case, and all federal funding is at risk. So before this council engages in any activity that requires unusual spending, you got to think once, twice, three times. Because if we put our budget at risk and do not have adequate reserves, we could be in a world of hurt because we just don't know what the future is going to hold. So I hope that you will approach soberly each and every budget decision, two of which are going to be discussed tonight, very soberly and not engage in wishful thinking or thinking just by spending money, you can accomplish things. Because that's one of the big problems government has had lately. He spends money but doesn't get things done. We've spent billions on solving the homeless problem, and it's only gotten worse. Let's do better here in Culver City. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Lester, followed by Todd Turizas.
Hello. I just wanted to remind you, don't defund the police, don't spend money on the bike lanes, and don't overbuild Fox Hills. I hope Bristol Plaza doesn't become a problem, because now with the financial crisis, large projects like that may or may not be built. But the one thing I wanted to talk to you about is the situation where I read that you're thinking about giving money to attorneys to help people that are being evicted. I own property all over the country. I only own one property here in L.A. County because of the overburden that the governments, you know, all of the government regulations. It's my place in Culver City. I do own property here in Southern California, Riverside County. It's all for sale. Also, it's my understanding that the state already supplies attorneys to people that are being evicted, because I just went through that. So I wouldn't be spending money on that, so. Good luck.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Todd Turizas, followed by Kim Witherby.
Hey, good evening, Council and Mayor and Vice Mayor. My name is Todd Turizas, and I'm the founder, executive director, and president of the AI La Community. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that provides a platform for education, professional development, innovation, and the emerging technologies across all industries here in Los Angeles. Founded nine years ago, we have been regularly convening to help upscale Angelenos in our great region about AI and have grown our community to over 23,000 people. Given the city we live in and my education at the USC Cinematic Arts, my nonprofit hosts an annual temple event called AI on the Lot, which helps upscale the media and entertainment industry on new technologies and tools. This is our third year hosting this event, which draws almost 1,000 people each year. We're moving it from downtown Los Angeles to Culver City on May 27th to 30th, around the Culver Steps and Culver Theater area. I'm asking to have an off-cycle sponsorship for the AI on the Lot event agendized for consideration of city sponsorship. Now, I'm not looking for financial support, rather the marketing benefits that come from the sponsorship. I spoke about this back in March 10th and was asked to talk to Elaine Wagner, Warner, sorry, and have yet to get that agendized. So I'm hoping that this next time will happen. I see that AI on the Lot as a new economic development initiative for the city of Culver that will help upscale our workforce with new skills for unemployment in the heart of the screen land. This will also help drive more awareness and foot traffic in the downtown Culver area to boost the economy of the small businesses in the neighborhood. My vision is to build this event gradually, year after year, in the great city of Culver, similar to how South by Southwest grew gradually in Austin, Texas. So will you please help us by agendizing AI on the Lot for the next council meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. I get three nodding heads for that.
I'm sorry, I'm seeing Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Vera, Mayor, Councilmember Fish. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Okay, ready? Good evening. My name is Kim Witherby, and I am a Public Information Officer with the Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. The SBA's goal is to make sure that the City Council and the individuals and businesses of Culver City are aware that disaster relief is available to them in the form of low-interest disaster loans. We help businesses and individuals, renters, to repair or replace
Could you speak into the mic?
Oh, sorry. Repair or replace any physical damage. And also, the SBA's Economic Injury Disaster Loan is available for businesses with working capital to meet their financial obligations if they've been impacted from the recent fires. They can apply for up to $2 million, and they may not even realize yet that they've been impacted, so that deadline is not until October 8th. There are many benefits to an SBA loan, such as 0% interest and no payments for the first 12 months. If there's anybody in the community that is interested, they can go to our website, which is sba.gov/disaster. If they prefer to talk to somebody on the phone, that can be at 1-800-659-2955. And you have a pretty local disaster relief center, so if anybody requires in-person help, they can go to 10850 West Pico Boulevard. And that is open Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 6:00, and then Saturdays till 4:00. The SBA just wants to make sure that if there are any affected community members in Culver City that they're aware of these disaster loans. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marta Valdez, followed by Assad Shalhoub.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien and Vice Mayor Pooza and Councilmembers. I'm here on three different statements. The first one is, I'd like to say thank you and applaud our police department for doing a great job for attending, for responding to the alarm at the Culver City High School. And please do not defund their budget, because we're really going to need them, especially when the Olympics are coming. Second is, I was here a couple of weeks ago saying that someone had fallen in front of my house because of the sidewalk. And I'd like to say thank you. It got repaired, and I can't tell you what a relief it is watching people walk in front of my house and knowing that they're not going to trip and fall, because the person that fell had to go to the ER to rule out a subdural hematoma in which she is now injured. But she's still okay. Third thing is, the project, the Jubalo Project. I've been attending your financial advisory meetings. I attended your budget meeting that the lady presented about the community and how that we're in a deficit. It doesn't make sense to me that we're going to put $16 million for that project when we're in a deficit already. And so I'd just like you to consider not funding the Jubalo Project and invest in us. Invest on our streets, but don't defund the police. Don't invest in the Jubalo Project. That's it. But thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Assad Shalhoub.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien, Councilmember Bubba Fish, and members of the Culver City Council. My name is Assad Shalhoub and I am the co-founder of Habibi House Podcasts and Mina Creator Club. I am Lebanese-Arab-American myself, so this agenda means a lot to me. Thank you for placing the Arab American Heritage Month on tonight's agenda. This recognition means a great deal to our community. I especially want to thank Councilmember Fish, not just for your vote of support, but for standing with us as a proud Jewish member of the city. Your acknowledgement of Mahmoud Khalil and other political prisoners, along with all the Arab struggles, is a powerful gesture of solidarity. It reminds us that healing and justice are possible when we come together across communities. Arab Americans have long been a vital part of Culver City, from neighborhood, neighborhood staples like Jackson Market to places of worship like the King Fahad Mosque. We are deeply rooted here. We are entrepreneurs, educators, artists, and essential members of the social and cultural fabric of the city. But we are also a community that has endured generations of pain from war, displacement, and systemic erasure. Too often, our stories have been left out, our voices overlooked. That's why initiatives like Arab American Heritage Month matter. They give us a chance to be seen, to be heard, and to be recognized as part of the American story. It's also why legislation like AB 61, the Mina Inclusion Act, is so critical. AB 61 will require California state agencies, boards, and departments to finally recognize Middle Eastern and North African communities and data collection. This kind of representation is key to accessing the resources and our support our communities need to thrive. At the same time, we must protect our free speech, especially when it comes to advocating for justice and sharing our lived experiences. Suppression of Arab and Muslim voices, and even Jewish and Christian voices, whether in policy or public discourse, is a threat to all of us. Thank you again for this important step. Let Culver City be a model for what solidarity, inclusion, and community care can look like. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
All right. And then we're going to circle back to Steve Siegel, who's now online. Steve Siegel?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you. This is regarding Jubalo Village. The speakers were pretty restrained. Just want to mention that The Observer, a couple of weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago, had an article that discussed how Santa Monica and Los Angeles are headed on their way to bankruptcy. I was looking at the financials of Culver City. It does not look good. If you don't think a city can go bankrupt, it can because we're about to see it possibly happen in two cities. It's, it's very, very messy. There's nothing about that project that seems to make financial or any other sense. It doesn't even sound like there will be all Culver City residents housed there. Again, we've done a tremendous job as a city providing housing for people. We just can't do everything. And as my understanding, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, we don't typically ever dip into general funds to do something like this. Those are for emergencies, as Mr. Austrian mentioned. When you start making bad decisions about financial issues when you're already, you know, basically in debt, it can only most likely get much worse. Again, this is math. It's not politics. I also don't understand certain aspects of this. Are we allowed to rebuild a church as a city? I think that's part of the project. I don't know if that's mixing things that aren't supposed to be mixed. I really don't know. And also, I was informed and I'm happy to be told if it's incorrect, but my understanding that Mr. Fish and Mr. Puza's campaign manager is a member of that church, I don't know if there's a conflict of interest. I do remember Mr. Puza abstaining from a vote about building in Fox Hills because maybe he lived there, I don't know. But this is a much closer situation. So we just need to be very, very careful about how we spend our money. And more importantly, we need to be looking at, yes, I understand, looking at trying to find ways to raise revenue, but we probably need to look at ways to help save money, to cut costs. I don't see any other way. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
And that was the final speaker.
Thank you.
Oh, and prior to receipt and filing of correspondence, I just wanted, for the record, to identify that Councilmember McMoran arrived at 7:28 p.m. and I'm just going to do a quick roll call, which I've just done, so that she's able to vote.
All good?
All is good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. May I have a motion to receive and file correspondence?
I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Vice Mayor Puza. To receive and file the correspondence that was received by 3:00 p.m. today, please vote. All members have voted. The motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. So on the consent, do we have any items councilmembers want to pull? Councilmember Fish?
Just C5. Thank you.
C5? Okay. Councilmember McMoran? Councilmember Vera? Vice Mayor? Okay.
We have a speaker for C8.
C8?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we go ahead and take that speaker?
It is Marcy Bond. And the agenda item is up on the screen, a word of a construction contract to Toro Enterprises.
I don't really have a lot to say about this. I know it's already a done deal, but I would just like to paint, point out that even if this is coming from the metro, it's a waste of taxpayer money. As we've seen from the Venice Bike Lane and the Bus Lane, it will be empty and it will just cause more traffic. I know there's some of you on here that really support this, but I feel like, once again, the residents are not, the residents who live here are not being listened to. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a staff report on C5?
I just have one question for, I guess whoever our Public Works representative for this item is, is it Mr. Maximus? I see here is Gary Wensley, but I don't know if he's here. Okay.
I know the Public Works Director had a family emergency this afternoon, so maybe there's...
I don't even plan to actually pull the item from the rest of the items. I just had a question on C5, so we can maybe address it at another time. It's about whether we are considering electric vehicles when it comes to procuring our service vehicles like these service vans and sewer inspection trucks.
Councilmember, you know, I raise that question with staff all the time. And I know there's an intent to move to EVs where we can. I don't know if that was an option here or not. It, it may not have been, but I know that's our intent to go electric where we, where we can.
Thank you. Normally, I try to get these questions in front of our staff early. This was one that I wasn't able to today, but that was my question. I can connect with him offline, too. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So if there's no further questions, can I get a motion to approve C1 through C13?
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera and a second by Councilmember McMoran to approve the entire consent calendar. Please vote. All members have voted. That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're on to our public hearing. May I receive a motion from council to receive and file the affidavits of publication and posting of notices and correspondence received in response to the public hearing notices?
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera and a second by Councilmember McMoran. Please vote. All members have voted and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay. May we have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the homeowner is at 10701 Ranch Road, petition the city to vacate a sliver of public right-of-way, 543 square feet, in order for it to align with the existing long-term improvements, mainly in their fencing along Drakewood Avenue behind the back of curb. Records research determined that the aforementioned property owners actually own the underlying fee of this portion of Drakewood Avenue. Attached to our exhibits A and B, the proposed resolution includes a legal description of the property and proposed street vacation. Back on February 24th, the city council adopted a resolution to vacate the 543 square feet and set the public hearing for today on April 14th. In compliance with stated California laws, we mailed notices to property owners within 500 feet, published it in the Culver City News two times, and we posted the property with on the stakes, the notice of the vacation of the portion of the public right-of-way. And I received only one phone call from a neighbor who just wanted clarification, is Drakewood going to be narrowed? And I said, no, Drakewood will remain the same width, the curb will remain the same location, it's just adjusting their property line, which is halfway down their slope up to the fence line. And we discussed this internally with the city manager and he recommended that we proceed forward with it. And our recommendation is the city council approve this vacation. The property owners will be responsible, if this, if this motion is approved, to pay the additional property tax for this additional 543 square feet of, of land. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions from council?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just one question. I noticed that there's, that just the publishing of the notice is $650. Do we have a policy about, I, I know we're giving the land, right? There's no, there's no price that we're charging on this. Should we, as a matter of policy for the city, maybe consider if it costs the city $650, charging $650, which is, still seems like a pretty cheap price for, for this much land? I mean, is that something we want to ask to recoup?
That's a good question. I've been with the city for 26 years and this is the fifth street vacation. And every time that we've done in the past, the underlying fee owner is the adjacent property. So we just internally felt that, well, they own the property, we're, we're asking them when the track was developed to have a right-of-way there. So we're giving that land back that they requested and our internal decision was, we'll pay for it. But if the council wants to change the policy for future requests for street vacations, they come in once every five years. We can, we can do that next time.
That sounds pretty rare.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera and a second by Councilmember McMoran to open the public hearing. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes unanimously.
Do we have any speakers?
We do.
Okay.
First up, we have Ben Odell.
Good evening. My name is Ben Odell. Along with my wife Vanessa, I'm the homeowner of 10701 Ranch Road. And this resolution tonight is a result of a two-year saga that started when we began a long-delayed backyard renovation. And our property survey showed that a narrow strip along the northeast side of our property that contained our fence, a portion of a retaining wall, and some other improvements was actually in the city right-of-way. So our research showed that the fence and the other improvements had been there for at least 50 years, most likely since the house was originally built in 1955. And so we began meeting with the city to figure out what to do about this. And my reason for speaking now tonight is to thank the city staff for all of their work meeting with us over the past two years, trying to figure out what happened here and then trying to figure out how to resolve it. And I want to thank them for the staff recommendation that the city council adopt the resolution. In particular, I want to thank Matt Gaspar and Yanni Dimitri of the Public Works Department, as well as Vice Mayor Puza, who met with us. My wife and I were very thankful to live in a place like Culver City where city staff and officials are responsive to residents' needs and try to resolve problems on a human level. So thank you to the city staff for your hard work and recommendation, and thank you to the city council for your consideration.
Is Kim Weatherby still here? I think she left. I think she might have signed up incorrectly.
Right. Okay. Thank you. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera and a second by Councilmember McMoran to close the public hearing. Please vote. All members have voted. This motion passes unanimously.
Any other discussion by council? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt a resolution to vacate 543 square feet of a portion of Drakewood Avenue fronting 10701 Ranch Road, track number 18215, pursuant to Division 9, Part 3, Chapter 3 of the Streets and Highway Code?
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Vice Mayor Puza. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. On day 1.
Next up, we have agenda item A1. And I'm going to read the whole thing. Adoption of an ordinance authorizing the city to conduct an all-male ballot election on August 26, 2025. Unanimous vote requirement is the adoption of a resolution declaring a fiscal emergency pursuant to Article 8(c) of the Constitution of the State of California. Calling and giving notice of holding a special all-male municipal election to be held on Tuesday, August 26, 2025, for the purpose of submitting to the voters one ordinance to enact a local transactions and use tax, otherwise known as a sales tax measure, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the ballot measure. Adoption of a resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles to render specified services related to the conduct of the said election. Discussion and, if desired, adoption of a resolution authorizing and giving priority to the city council and/or city council members to submit ballot arguments, primary and rebuttal regarding the ballot measure, and creation, if desired, creation of an appointment of city council members to an ad hoc city council subcommittee to draft or submit such ballot arguments. And then a four-fifths requirement of a vote to approve a related budget amendment appropriating $540,000 from the general fund unassigned balance for election costs, and the approval of agreements for election services with Heart Inter-Civic in an amount not to exceed $75,000, and with ProVote Solutions in an amount not to exceed $210,000, and authorization to the city manager to approve any other election-related agreements as needed with the allocated budget of $540,000. the allocated budget of $540,000. And now I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Mike Bruckner, who's going to explain the emergency.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Mike Bruckner, Assistant City Manager, joined this evening by Chief Financial Officer Lisa Soger, City Clerk Jeremy Boquino, and Deputy City Attorney Michael Cobden. The item before you this evening is a series of required actions related to the calling for a special all-male ballot municipal election on Tuesday, August 26, 2025, for the placement of a one-quarter cent sales tax ballot measure to be presented to Culver City voters. On February 24, 2025, the city council received the fiscal year 2024-2025 mid-year budget update. During the presentation, the city council was informed that based on current general fund revenues and expenditures, the city's 10-year forecast shows that the structural deficit first identified in the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget has widened. If prudent measures are not taken, general fund reserves are projected to be reduced from $151.4 million in the current year to $10.4 million in fiscal year 2034-2035. To add further context to the current state of fiscal stress, the fiscal year 2024-2025 general fund projected deficit is $35.5 million. At the March 4, 2025 city council meeting, the city council unanimously requested that staff agendize a discussion item regarding the placement of a one-quarter cent sales tax ballot measure at an upcoming election. On March 17, 2025, the city council, by unanimous consent, directed the city manager to bring forward an item calling for a declaration of fiscal emergency, placing a one-quarter cent sales tax measure on a ballot, and calling for a special all-male ballot election on Tuesday, August 26, 2025, and conduct polling on the viability of a proposed measure. The actions requested this evening are outlined in the staff report, and were just cited by our city clerk. And with that concludes my presentation, and Steph and I are happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Let's start with any questions right now, and then we'll do comments after.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bruckner. And I just wanted to ask, when did the city, and I think you mentioned it in your presentation, but just to reiterate, when did the city become aware of the structural deficit in our general fund? Like the time, around the time?
So the, the structural deficit was first identified in last year's budget.
Okay. Thank you. And with regard to polling done by the city, is there anything that the staff wants to share about the results found, or anything that the staff can share for the public?
Yeah, so the city contracted with a polling consultant, FM3. They conducted a poll late last month, and based off of the polling results, they determined that a sales tax measure would be viable.
Okay, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McMoran?
I'm going to wait till after comments. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember, okay. Vice Mayor?
No, thank you.
All right. No questions for me. Do we have any comments?
We have one speaker. And I believe that's Steven Siegel.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you. Once again, I'd like to mention that I think going after the cost side, the expense side of what happens in Culver City would be very, very important. I understand the desire to raise funds. I don't know if this is going to pass, so I wonder if it's worth creating a special way to have a vote. I'm not an expert in this, in fact, I don't know anything about it. But I don't know about the security of all mail-in ballots. I just don't know how that works. I've heard that that's been manipulated in other states. I think they found out in Florida, the ballots were being cloned, and there were real problems. So I just don't know the validity of an all-mail-in ballot, how that would work. And I just wonder how, I don't think it was written, how much you save versus doing a walk-in, you're an in-person ballot. So I really don't know how that works. But overall, the financial problems of the city are extreme, and so I'm wondering if there's a need now, some kind of anti-bankruptcy preparation committee to really, really get serious about what's going on in the city. What we don't want to do is end up having to cut police, as Marcy was mentioning, that is one of the leading draws of people living in the city is safety, for those of us who have kids especially, or for the elderly, who are people most vulnerable. The children and the elderly would be the most. So I actively encourage you to consider ways to work on the expense side of what we do, prepare for this very difficult time that may be coming, as Ron Ostrin mentioned, regarding the financial structure of everything. And so we just don't want to end up like Santa Monica and LA. It's coming. So please look at all angles of how to prevent financial crisis, and please be very careful about all mail-in ballots and getting someone to certify that it's 100% okay, and it's 100% foolproof in terms of forgery of ballots, et cetera. Thank you very much.
You know, stating and restating, you know, our, at least my feelings on it, obviously sales tax, sales taxes are regressive, so they disproportionately impact lower-income communities, and they can certainly negatively impact small businesses. I've heard that from quite a few. And I, so I just kind of want to reiterate how we got here. When it comes to addressing our structural deficit, as a few callers tonight actually mentioned, we should have many different tools at our disposal, but because we decided not to examine our spending in any critical way, we now just have this one, the sales tax measure. So for two eight-hour days, the city council listened to work plan presentations from each department detailing their responsibilities, their challenges, and their goals for next year. And the process happened in a mostly empty council chambers. I don't think we heard from more than 15 people over those two days, maybe 20 in a city of 40,000. So I'm hoping to give, I was hoping to give the public some options they can review, so I supported a suggestion to use an exercise done in neighboring cities like LA and Santa Monica, where departments are asked to come back with budgets of 5% less and 5% more. This continues to be an option we could explore today, and who knows? Maybe it would reveal that we don't actually need to do more or need to ask for more revenues from our residents. You know, it's been said that because we're a growing city, we shouldn't make any changes to our budget, but in my view, it's precisely why we should. As our city grows, it will become more important that we retire programs and services that aren't serving us, so we can double down on those that are succeeding in their goals and improving life for our residents. But if we allow ourselves to be led by fear of change, we will stay paralyzed. If we're too fearful to improve our budget for the sake of our residents, I'm not sure why we have, why we bother having a budget process at all. It feels a bit performative, like we want to look like we care about what the public wants when we really don't. I'm going to support the sales tax measure tonight, not because it's the best tool for the job, but because it's the tool with the most support on this current council, and it's vital that we do address the deficit, as we all, I think, understand. But as our city grows, I do predict we are likely to find ourselves in this position again, unless we give ourselves the freedom to involve the community in our budget process, ask them what programs and services make the biggest impact on their everyday lives, and allow the budget to reflect those priorities. I'll continue to advocate for a future where we don't lead from a place of fear, where we aren't afraid to proactively go out into the community and ask for input from our residents on how we should spend our public dollars. We do this already for every other important plan we create in the city, from the general plan, the parks plan, complete streets plan, racial equity plan. I think the most important question is, why do we ask our residents for their opinion and for their input on pretty much every plan we create, except for the plan that decides how we spend their money? So for me, giving us the freedom to continually iterate and improve our budget process is not just the fiscally responsible thing to do, it's really the only way we can deliver better services to the public. And with that, I'll turn it over. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McMoran?
Thank you. I do have a really quick question. Were our prior, because we do have other sales taxes in Culver City that are specific to the city, were those in response to the pension liability, or were, what were the causes for those other taxes if it wasn't a structural deficit?
Councilmember, the first one I remember, I think it was a half-cent the first time, I'm trying to recall. It was after the 2008 financial crisis, and the city was experiencing a structural deficit at that time, and that was the reason that it was pursued then. And then, I, I, I have to do a little bit of research regarding what led up to the...
It was before I came to the city, so I'm not sure exactly what it was, but I feel, I'm trying to think about the date.
Isn't there Measure W with the water?
Measure W is the county's water. This city has Measure CW, is the local measure, so that was separate, but the...
I don't think...
Both C and CC were implemented before I got here, so I'm not quite sure of the impetus.
I'm embarrassed to say I don't remember, but we, we can get back to you, Councilmember.
Thank you. I just, the reason why I'm asking, I think the context is important to kind of hold how the city has addressed prior sales taxes, just it's also helpful for public information so that our community is sort of understanding how we as a council and as staff leadership are approaching these issues of how we support our city, how we provide services, so as much as we can sort of set the container for how we have in the past approached issues and what the impetus was for those, and we know sort of what the polls and the context are that we're dealing with in 2025. But I do think it's helpful to sort of evaluate what we've done in the past, and it's not always determinative, but could be helpful. So I just wanted to lift that up and look forward to update in the future. Thank you, City Manager and team that is here. In terms of just my thoughts on this sales tax, I, you know, I don't feel super great about it, you know, for reasons that I've stated in prior meetings. We know that not just Culver City residents pour into our sales tax, but, you know, for the most part, a lot of our dollars are solely utilized on, you know, residents and city services, and we know that stakeholders, and I see the Culver City community as a bit wider, as just folks who live here, you know, we have a lot of folks who are business owners, our studio partners, folks who attend our schools. I don't see a large differentiation between folks who really make up the rich tapestry of our wide Culver City community. So I just, you know, kind of wanted to bring that in the room, a sales tax is, I believe, our largest contributor to our general fund, you know, revenues, and it's not just Culver City residents strictly in terms of folks who live here that pour into that, so just to kind of hold that as well. Because, and I appreciate Councilmember Fish lifting up sort of the limitations that we have in terms of sort of how we deal with the structural deficit, we don't have any other tools, and I do think that's important to lift up because that also is a policy choice by limiting the option that we have to address the structural deficit of just being, adding a tax. And I recognize as well that, you know, if we don't pursue this, then it is likely there might, you know, be an additional tax coming from another body, so it is really advantageous for us as a local level to, you know, ensure that we have as many resources to support our community. But I, you know, I hope that we can see and hold as many tools as possible to address the changing needs of our community. So hopefully we'll have more time to sort of explore how we might be able to do that as we continue to move forward and navigate all the uncertainty of the federal level, the state level, the county level, because there are many changes that are happening all around us. And I don't say that to spark fear, I think that that has been lifted up quite a bit tonight, but really in an effort to ensure that we can and will navigate, we have navigated difficult times in the past, and we will continue to do so, and I hope come through this as a stronger Culver City community. So hopefully we, again, remember to turn toward one another instead of turning against one another, because we are in this together. So I say all that to say, while this, it's unfortunate that this is the only tool that has been presented to address our structural deficit, since this is a tool, I'm open to exploring it. I, you know, am not a super big vote-by-mail person, but hopefully folks and community members would come out and support this, I guess it remains to be seen. But I do really, you know, I hope that we can be more creative about how we deal with the issues in our city and the needs of our community, just to make sure that we have more of a narrow tailoring of the needs of our community as we continue to grow. So I hope colleagues keep that in mind as we continue to do the work to serve our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for this detailed report, and so for so time, I really appreciate all the hard work put into this. You know, it's really important, well, first off, let me clarify, if we don't capture this, most certainly another entity will capture it, whether it be the county or Metro, correct? Speculation, but one would...
I feel strongly that's the case.
All right, so I think it's imperative that we do capture this. If we had captured a sales tax when H was around, I think we would probably not be in this predicament right now, with all the money that was brought into the, or that the city paid out in very little return that we saw. But I think it's also really important that this council really practices fiscal responsibility and fiscal discipline. You know, one of my colleagues said that we're more than likely going to find ourselves in this predicament again, and we will if we don't practice discipline and responsibility. It's fiscally imperative that this does pass ASAP, and I don't know about the changing needs of our community. I think our community's needs have been pretty basic upfront with public services and the services that we provide. I'm not by any means looking to cut any portion of our services, and I think ultimately the only way to achieve any type of savings would be by cutting services, and still that wouldn't be enough to get us to where we need to be, unless we just dismantle an organization altogether. So that being said, I will support this moving forward, and I'll keep it as brief as possible, but yeah, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. As was mentioned, a sales tax is regressive, it does disproportionately impact low-income individuals, so it's not the ideal way to address our structural deficit. At the same time, a sales tax is a small percentage, and it will have a big impact, and it's expected to bring in an estimated $5 to $6 million a year, which would significantly address, you know, our structural deficit. As already noted, it will also, you know, it will be paid by our community, also paid by visitors and commuters, so it will spread the costs. I respect our differences of opinion on budget, and I do hope in the future that we use alternative and different methods when looking at our budget. I think we will have to, it will be important. Also important to keep in mind, as our community is expected to grow 10,000 to 20,000 people, if we cut or keep our budget the same, we are actually cutting the budget. Saying that with the passage of Measure A, as we talked about, it freed up the quarter-cent sales tax. And as I mentioned in my comments earlier, I've met with many community members about the budget, and all kinds of emotions about it, and I understand that. But it's important to note, if we don't do this, as was shared again, another agency can take it, and we all know everyone can use revenue right now, so we need to pass this as soon... So we need to pass this as soon as possible to ensure that the structural deficit is resolved. Again, this is not ideal, but we have to meet the present moment. And I hope everyone on this council can lock arms and work together to promote this measure. And I hope if this goes forward, we can get our community members to support it as well. Again, moving forward, we have to have serious conversations about the budget and with our community members as well. We have to think about alternative ways to deal with our budget and how we think about how we deliver the quality services that our community wants. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you to staff for the presentation. And I just want to express that I'm not happy about adding another tax to our community. It, you know, it's a quarter cent for every $100 spent. So, you know, it's not a lot of money, but everything accumulates, right? It adds up. And I think people get a little, or a lot, tiresome of constantly being taxed. And unfortunately, you know, that's the state we're in with the way we spend. And most of the things that we spend in terms of our services are needed, and we see results with them. I do have a question. My understanding is that this will not apply to groceries, right?
That's correct.
Is there anything else that it does not apply to?
Groceries, prescriptions. There are, we can do research. There is a list of things that are exempt in the state. The state legislature has actually made a long list of things that are exempt. So we'd have to do some research to get you that list. But as an example, I think there is something in front of the state legislature now. They're, you know, trying to get diapers exempted as an example. That hasn't moved through and been passed yet. But there are things like that that go all the time. But food, so groceries and prescriptions are for sure all exempt. And there are lists of other things we can find for you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that's important. I mean, while it is, sales taxes are regressive. It's good that, you know, the most basic needs, food and prescriptions certainly aren't. And I guess other things as well. I just have to bring this up, and maybe we can do this offline or maybe in a future council meeting. But I asked the current mayor of Santa Monica, and she said, I can quote her, about this presentation of a 5% cut as a hypothetical, as an option. And she's served on council since '21, and she has no recollection of it. Maybe it happened before then. But it had, Lana Negretti, mayor of Santa Monica, says it hasn't happened while she's been on council. And regarding input, I think it's valuable to get it from the public. I also think that we make great effort to seek it. Two eight-hour sessions on a Monday and a Tuesday with the opportunity to call in, with the opportunity to show up in person, with the opportunity to send in emails with your comments. Those are great opportunities. And then we're going to do this again next month for two more, two or three, depending upon how long it goes, but days, long, long days. These are great opportunities. And we find, year after year, and like with many things, we get a lot of the same voices. And I understand that's frustrating. But I believe, after being here for 25 years and participating, is that people like us are a little, you know, a little crazy. We like to, you know, lend our voice and take time, and it's valuable and it's great. But I don't feel that we, I'm going to say a double negative here. I don't feel that we don't try hard enough. I think we try really hard in getting input from the public. And it's just people live really busy lives. And the budget's very complicated. These, you know, our staff members know their departments very well. CFO Soger is well-certified to do her job and has years of experience. And it's a deep process. And I appreciate all the work that our staff does to present a budget that is understandable mostly for us laypeople. So thank you for all that. So it sounds like we have five votes on this. Unless there's any other comment, I'd like to accept a motion. We don't have to read through all the... Or do we have to do any of it separately?
Can I pick a subcommittee or write the...
We do. I actually would like to take each motion separately so that we can make a very clean decision on each.
And if, on the item where we're talking about writing...
Arguments?
Arguments. I would like to volunteer myself. And if Vice Mayor Puzza would like to join me in that, I think it'd be good to come from the mayor and the vice mayor if the council's agreeable.
Great. So let's take the first motion, which will be to adopt the proposed ordinance authorizing the city to conduct an all-male election on Tuesday, August 26, 2025. I have a motion from Councilmember Vera, a second from Councilmember Fish. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll have a motion to adopt the resolution declaring a fiscal emergency pursuant to Section 8(c) of the California Constitution, noting that a unanimous vote is required. And if that is the case, we will also be calling and giving notice of holding a special all-male municipal election to be held on August 26, 2025 to submit to the voters one ordinance to enact a local sales transactions and use tax measure. I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Vice Mayor Puzza. Please vote. And as necessary, we have a unanimous vote to adopt that resolution. Next, we have a motion to adopt the proposed resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors of the county to render specified services to the city related to the municipal election. We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Vice Mayor Puzza. Please vote. That motion passes unanimously. And now we talk about the arguments. So there is a choice. You can either designate two council members to prepare and submit the primary and rebuttal arguments as necessary on behalf of the city council. Or you can create the ad hoc subcommittee of two members to draft the primary and rebuttal arguments. But then you need to complete the work with enough time so that we can hold a special meeting sometime between now and April 28, so that the full city council can agree to it. And then that would mean also that if there is an argument against, you'd also have to write the rebuttals as a subcommittee, bring them to the full council for approval prior to the deadline for that argument, that rebuttal, which is May 8. So it would add two special meetings if you did it that way. And normally, the practice is that the two members are selected and by resolution will complete both sets of arguments on behalf of the council. Does that make sense?
I'll make a motion for that one, for the first option, having selecting yourself and the vice mayor to draft it on behalf of council.
Okay. So that will be number four. We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Councilmember Fish to adopt a resolution authorizing and giving priority to council members, Vice Mayor Puzza and Mayor O'Brien. Great. Okay. Please vote. All members have voted. That resolution is adopted. Four ayes abstained from Councilmember McMoran. So we don't need number five. Number six is the approval of a related budget amendment appropriating $540,000 from the general fund unaside balance for election costs. And this requires four fifths. We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Vice Mayor Puzza. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes unanimously. Number seven is the approval of agreements for election services with Heart Inter-Civic and ProVote Solutions. And we have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Vice Mayor Puzza to approve the agreements. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes unanimously. And then we will authorize the city manager to approve other non, other election-related agreements as needed within the allocated budget of $540,000. We have a motion by Councilmember Vera, waiting for a second. Second by Vice Mayor Puzza. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes unanimously. And I'm going to take numbers nine and 10 together. And that is authorize the city attorney to prepare and review the necessary documents and authorize the city manager to execute such documents on behalf of the city. Please vote. Waiting for one vote. All members have voted. And that passes, five ayes, and you have passed all of the motions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we say it now? Oh, thank you.
And I'll contact you tomorrow to let you know exactly.
Okay, thank you.
I'll contact you tomorrow regarding this.
Okay. A2?
Sorry, we're pulling up the presentation here.
Oh, go ahead.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Jesse Mays, Assistant City Manager. Staff recommends the city council consider the public's input on the future use of the city-owned property at 11029 Washington Boulevard, the former Redding Gun Store. Discuss and provide the city manager direction on next steps. Next slide. In September 2023, the city council approved purchase of the former Redding Gun Store on Washington Boulevard. Since then, the city's artist laureate Katie Krantz has installed a temporary mural project and a temporary mosaic project created in conjunction with the community on the exterior of the building. In September 2024, the city council approved a robust public input process to get community input on the future use of the property. Community input was gathered through an online and paper input tool, which was widely advertised throughout the community. The city held an open house at the site in October where artist laureate Katie Krantz led a public art activity, and attendees gave feedback on the ideas that they liked. The city received 255 responses to the online visioning form, which exceeded the goal of 250 responses set at the September 2024 city council meeting. Most of the people who responded indicated that they lived in Culver City. The city also received ideas at the community meeting via email and via social media. In all, the public submitted 103 unique ideas for what the city could do with the property. The category of ideas which were submitted most often were: affordable housing, community recreation center, commercial development such as restaurant, store, or business, arts center performing and/or visual arts, park or open space, including gardens, community gardens, sport, courts, and pools, social services including homelessness, childcare, and mental health, market rate housing, sell, give away the property, museum, or business incubator. It's important to note that this is not a scientific survey, but a snapshot of the various ideas in the community as contributed by people who chose to fill out the form. At the October community meeting, next slide. Thank you. The ideas that generated the most likes were art studio school with 18, community garden, affordable housing, garden, and makerspace. It's important to note that this is not a scientific community survey, but rather an indication of uses that would be most appealing to people choosing to attend a weekend morning art event and choosing to complete the form. That concludes my staff report, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you for the report, Assistant City Manager Mays. I appreciate all the outreach that went into, you know, getting different points of view on the project. I was able to go to the open house. on the project. I was able to go to the open house last year. It was really nice, and it got a lot of people thinking about the future of the space. Just curious, there hasn't been any, I know affordable housing was a popular response or like the top response from the survey there. How many, there hasn't been any like analysis of what could fit on the parcel yet, right? I mean, do we know, we probably do know what zoning allows for, right? And is there anyone that could speak to what the parcel could even accommodate currently? If that were the direction of this body?
Yeah, I don't know if Mark Munzer's online, but I think he has done that calculation, and it's in the staff report. I believe it's 35 units, 35 dwelling units?
Good evening, Council. Mark Munzer, 35 dwelling units per acre is the base summing.
Thank you. And is that something that if housing were a priority for this project, is that something that could be changed or that this council could decide to take, you know, take action to change to accommodate more units if this was something we really wanted to take advantage of?
Yeah, I believe council could change, you know, whatever it wanted with municipal code.
Thank you. And then what would be the next steps, you know, tonight after we say, okay, we want you to explore, you know, doing a community garden space, or we want you to explore, you know, a business incubator or whatever the idea is? What are sort of the next, what's the next phase of this process like?
Yeah, that's a great question. It really depends on the direction of the council as to what type of facility or use you want to pursue on the project. If it's affordable housing, I think directing us to issue a request for proposals would be a good next step. But if it's some sort of civic community use, that would be a totally different process. And I think, you know, we would have to take a look at how we would fund such a project. That would probably be the next step in that project.
Thank you. Do we, do we have any idea of the types of uses that would, because we are also not just in a housing crisis, we're also in our fiscal emergency. So finding ways to generate revenue is also an important opportunity here to explore. Do you have, do you have an idea of what some of those revenue generating activities that could actually also provide housing? Or is there overlap on uses that could kind of handle, tackle both of these big problems that we're facing as a city?
There definitely are. I mean, you could put a retail use on the ground floor with affordable housing above it. And the types of retail uses, you know, are varied, but one of the, you know, best generators of sales tax would be automotive sales if the council is interested in that sort of thing. But otherwise, it could be anything. It could be a restaurant, coffee shop, thrift shop, whatever you want.
Thank you. Looking forward to hearing comments from the public, and I'll turn it over now. Thanks.
Councilman McMoran?
I'll wait until after comments. Thanks.
Councilmember Vera?
Yeah, no questions. I just wait for comments. Or can we do comments, or what are we doing?
We'll do comments after the-
Okay.
Do we know the value of the property if we were to sell it?
We're working on an appraisal, so we don't have that number quite yet, but we're preparing it in advance of whatever next steps would be. We do estimate that it is somewhere in the range of three to five million dollars.
Thank you. And if we pursued the retail option, who would, would the city own that? Or, and the city would run it? Or how would that work?
Vice Mayor, you know, there are other cities that you could either transfer the property to another property owner, but there are cities that continue to own property with retail uses. We do. Trader Joe's, for instance, at the Ants Parking Garage is an example.
Do we have any idea, it's probably really hard to tell, but how much that can generate per year?
It's completely dependent upon the type of use that would go in. It's impossible to predict. You know, I think what's, the best option for the city, if you're looking at, you know, that sort of use, along with affordable housing, will be to consider issuing an RFP and seeing what the market tells us.
Thank you. Can I ask a clarifying question about that? City Manager, are you saying that an RFP would be for, to lease the space or purchase it, or both to compare?
I'd leave it as open as the council's willing to do so. And just keep your options open, see what the market proposes.
Thank you.
Thank you. No questions for me right now. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we currently have nine speakers signed up.
Okay, great.
I'll go ahead and call them so they can get prepared. We have Greg Whitfield, Janine Wisniewski-Stalin, Marcy Bond, Crystal Alexander, Ronald Ostrin with one minute seated by Leslie Ostrin, Daryl Menthe, Kira Push, Alicia Ide, and Alexi Steele. Our first speaker is Greg Whitfield. Not seeing them in chambers or online. Our next speaker is Janine Wisniewski-Stalin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, thank you. Very interestingness. That was a cultural research mission based out of two things, a blank face building to the beautiful artwork that's done now. And of course, I'm always looking at how we can truly unify our city. And it is one of the top contenders for what the citizens wanted or asked for. That all being said, I think that we might be putting a cart for a horse then because we do not actually know what the building specifically would be appraised at. I think we need that, I think we need a cost benefit analysis of the, maybe the top ideas, and then consider them. I think that's the way to go. And I am really curious, we do have some city staff experts, I really would like to know if they have feelings on what they think that we could do based on what other cities do as well. I think we've got a future opportunity. And we also must be fiscally mindful. So this is a lot to consider, but I'm asking, you know, we've got, what, eight percent, I looked at your numbers, 5% responses, 8% responses of the survey, 11% going to do number punching. The city, people living in the city were really curious about the gun store and wanted it gone. I think there's a responsibility to do this right. So, but I think it's too soon. I think you should look at the options, consider a couple of them, but do the cost benefit analysis and really find out what it's worth. Because selling it might be the best option. Sadly, we're not able to attend, but be mindful of art. Thank you.
Commissioner, but right now I'm speaking as a resident. This is my own opinion. I have expressed this opinion before, so it should come as no surprise. Due to our budget emergency, the best option for the city really is to sell, especially once we find out how much, what its market value is. But if we aren't going to sell, then I would encourage the council to give it to Parks and Recs. This building is close to Telleson Park and could be used for Parks and Recs Kids Camp, which is extremely popular amongst residents. Just this last week, the Financial Advisory Committee reviewed the Parks and Recs fees report, which you will soon be looking at as well. And one of the questions they asked was why we have such limited spots for these camps. This is because we just don't have the space. We don't have the inside space for them. It's to ensure that, because the camps are during the summer, they're during the spring, they're during the winter. If in the summer it's really hot and they have no place to put the kids inside, then they can't have any more kids in these camps. So while personally, I really believe that the best option right now, considering our budget deficit, is to sell. If you're not going to, consider the parks, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Crystal Alexander, followed by Ronald Ostrin.
Good evening. I'm Crystal Alexander. As Chair and on behalf of the PRCS Commission, I'd like to take a moment to remind you of a few things regarding the former gun store property. Before the city council directed a public process on soliciting ideas on how it might be used, the commission had a discussion about potential uses of this property in December of 2023. The commission, by unanimous vote, directed one of its members to communicate its position to the city council on December 11th. Vice Chair Jane Leonard appeared before you and asked that this property be retained for PRCS uses. Subsequent to this meeting, the PRCS department embarked on a lengthy process to prepare a Parks master plan for the entire city. And what the plan specifically notes is a severe deficit of space for PRCS activities and uses, and encourages future opportunity sites such as the former gun store to be strongly considered. As you can see from the agenda report before you, many of the ideas suggested as uses for this property are unsurprisingly under the PRCS umbrella. The community understands this need, as does the commission, as does the city council. I will also add that as the city seeks to provide more housing, the city also needs to step up its game in matching with other important services such as those provided specifically by PRCS. The time is now. The opportunity is here. As an individual, I request that you remember these comments and actions in your deliberations. If the property is not to be sold, and I tend to think that it probably should be sold to get some money back into the budget, I would recommend it be added to the PRCS for activities and uses for benefit of the entire community of Culver City. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ronald Ostrin with one minute seated by Leslie Ostrin, followed by Daryl Menthe.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. The remarks of Ms. Bond and Ms. Alexander are very compelling, and I, as a matter of aspiration, would not object to the city putting this as underneath the parks. And my only comments is once again under the theme of fiscal responsibility. We kind of made an emotional decision to purchase this gun store because of the concerns and fears of mostly the La Biona parent community. And it was very compelling, even I was moved in that regard. But unfortunately, we overpaid for this property. And not only that, but we really lost a great source of sales tax revenue by not letting another gun store take over the spot. But sometimes decisions are not just about money. But in this situation with the, with the fiscal uncertainty, I think we got to see what the highest and best use of this property is without prejudgment and find out what we could sell it for to see if we can recoup the money and what the use would be by the purchaser. Because probably the best use of this would be a mixed use with retail on the bottom and some housing upstairs. But keep in mind, this is a very, very small property that for most purposes is a teardown. And there's no way we could get 35 units in there. And, and I think we have to be realistic. So I think what the council should focus in is finding out what the value of the property is, what's the highest and best use, and unrestricted request for proposal from developers, and see whether it has the best, what would be the best economic result. But if, if the city can afford it, I don't mind it being in the parks. My own personal preference is that it be turned into an art museum and also exhibition space for the historical society, which maybe also could be part of the park's ambit. But I think before we, we hold on to this property, we find out what's the best economic result. And I don't think we should predispose it having to be affordable housing, especially when we're putting apparently such a substantial, huge, and in my opinion, risky investment in the Jubalo Housing Project. We can't live in a bubble that says we can get what we want and spend what we want when we don't even know if we make the investment that we'll get anything for.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daryl Menthe, followed by Kira Push.
Well, good evening, Council. I told my teenage kids that I was going to come here and be a wet blanket, and they're like, you do you, Dad. So that's what I'm here to say. You know, we bought this property kind of by accident, right? We had a good moral purpose in doing so. But nobody said, you know what, I'd like to invest $6 million and buy this particular property. We didn't make that. It just sort of happened. It fell into our laps. And sometimes like going to the store and accidentally buying the most expensive thing, you just go and return it. You don't sit there and play with what you might do, even though frankly a ziplining center would be awesome, and I saw it. I strongly recommend you sell the property as soon as you can to the highest bidder and make the most money that you can off the property. And then, if you get $5 million and decide later, as a community, as a council, that you'd like to spend that money to build any of these things, you can then find an appropriate property in the city where you might do it. Because this property was not what anyone chose. So that is my recommendation to you. I know it's boring, but selling the property and getting the money back and then making any investment decision later is what I think is the best course for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kira Push, followed by Alicia Ide.
I just wanted to voice my support for, in support of a multi-use development at the gun store site. I think in spite of the five lanes of two-way traffic on Washington Boulevard at that location, it has a huge potential to be a lot more pedestrian-friendly. And repurposing the gun store to be mixed use is a really awesome opportunity to continue to work towards making the city more walkable and human scale. I'm personally partial to a community garden and affordable housing space. In addition to the park right next door and the great restaurants within a couple blocks, that spot already has a really good amount of public transportation infrastructure, including connections to three different bus lines, including the six, that would definitely serve to help support additional residents on that street. And in context of the often referenced budget deficit, I think it's important to highlight the fact that affordable housing not only makes much-needed stable housing more accessible, but also increases local spending, generates local tax revenue, attracts and retains workers, and just generally increases economic activity, and ultimately helps to create a more vibrant and prosperous community. That's all. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Alicia Ide, followed by Alexi Steele.
Hi, my name is Alicia Ide, and while I work for the city, I am here tonight-
Hi, my name is Alicia Ide, and while I work for the city, I am here tonight representing the Culver City Arts Foundation. Despite the fact that Culver City was founded by artists and entrepreneurs, and despite the fact that arts industries make up a significant percentage of the city's economic engine, municipal art facilities in Culver City are surprisingly absent. The city leased away its two professional-grade theaters and the Baskatorium at Vets Memorial in no way serves as a viable performing arts space. There are no outdoor performance spaces beyond open park areas. And while the city has many public art installations, the city has no exhibition spaces, no artist studios, and very little in the way of art-making facilities beyond a small ceramic space in dire need of basic maintenance improvements. Culver Arch wants to remind you that active participation in the arts is critical to our individual physical health and well-being. The arts are literally part of our biology, hardwired into our brains. Arts are, at the same time, a critical means of social engagement, allowing us to reach beyond barriers, strengthen community bonds, instigate change, and the list goes on. And of course, the arts represent a massive economic engine, particularly in this city, and the creative economy should be nurtured not just by offering companies benefits, but by engaging the tens of thousands of creative employees in arts activities. The city seems to recognize some importance for arts for children and seniors, demonstrated by programs for those age groups. But participation in the arts should not end with high school graduation, only to resume after retirement. Everyone should have access to quality arts activities throughout their lives. While various locations have been suggested for a municipal art gallery, the gun store location is ideal for a much-needed art exhibition space. It is a central-city location, convenient transportation access, and it could feature art-making spaces, artist studios, and evil affordable housing for artists. We would suggest that this location be added to the Parks Plan, and that was passed earlier this year and identified specifically for arts use. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alexi Steele, followed by Katie Krantz.
Hello, Mayor O'Brien, honorable members of Culver City City Council, members of the staff. My name is Alexi Steele. I'm a former artist laureate emeritus, and I'm here to commend you and to thank you for this very, maybe unexpected, maybe tough decision on that former gun store location and place. This is a great asset that city now has, and using it to the maximum benefit of the city instead of selling it and losing money on it, instead of using it and making future with it, I think would fit the vision of the City Council, which I commend and thank you for. And I was advocating for quite a bit, a long time, the need for municipal gallery in our city. There is a very specific, very real need. Art in Culver City is not a discretionary thing, something that we do when we have everything else working for us, because art is actually in the foundation of everything that's working for us historically and now. Now, when we talk about combination of crises, they bring to crisis of creativity. We're pushing creatives out of the state of California. They're leaving the state of California. We're kicking them out with gentrification and all the fun things. While losing creatives, the creative segment of economy will go too. This location has a phenomenal potential for municipal art gallery that would become a platform for creatives of our city going into the future, even if you're considering longer-term high investment. This is low-cost investment. Turning this location into municipal gallery, it's a biggest bang for the money. It's a lowest fiscally responsible decision with a maximum impact, validating your vision. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie Krantz. Not seeing her online or in the chamber. That was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the speakers. Comments from councilmembers.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you to everyone that came to speak on this. I just really appreciate the staff for all the outreach you did and the social media posts. And it really did seem to, you know, just get everyone thinking and spark a lot of conversations. So, and I think it is a real gift to have an opportunity to imagine a space together that the community wants, or what this, you know, this space could be. And I heard lots of different thoughts tonight and in the staff report. Community space, affordable housing, mixed use, space for parks, desire for the space to help replenish, also a desire for the space to help replenish the funds it took to purchase it. And I felt, and, you know, just reading the staff report and what came through in the outreach, that it was interesting that affordable housing was the number-one use there, or the number-one ask. I know it's not a scientific poll, with a community rec center right behind that. And it was, you know, I appreciate the, you know, the back and forth with you, Assistant City Manager, about how we can possibly combine these desires for housing and replenishing some of the revenues or even adding a revenue source for the city. I was interested in what Vice Mayor Puza was suggesting about, or was talking about when it comes to, could we do a lease, or could we do, you know, a very long lease that could, you know, generate a consistent revenue for the city that's more than just a one-time purchase? So I'd love to see those options. But I really, I'm excited about the prospect of this possibly alleviating or helping to alleviate our housing supply crisis. I mean, that's, I think, a really big opportunity here. In the poll that we did for A1 about the sales tax measure, 74% of respondents said that the lack of affordable housing was an extremely serious or very serious problem, and that was the largest number of people in any category. And it certainly came up, you know, over the course of last year, pretty much everyone I talked to. So I would love to see if we could explore some kind of, and I don't have all the details, and I'm sure my colleagues will have ideas too, and staff, an idea, something we could do that could combine this need for housing, whether it's affordable, whether it's income-restricted, would be great, but maybe not required, and also this desire to generate some revenue for the city. So I would love to see the property go, you know, go towards our badly lacking bank of land that can be used for affordable housing developments. But even if the property can't be turned into affordable housing, whatever we do put here, maybe we could generate revenue that could be earmarked for existing and future affordable housing services and projects. Kind of thinking about our commercial linkage fee and whether maybe the revenue that, whatever we put there could generate, whether it be the lease of the property or the purchase of it, could go towards existing expenditures for housing services and future. And I just want to reiterate that I would support any zoning amendments that we might want to make to this property specifically that could make it more feasible for housing development, because I see that it's zoned, and thank you to Director Munzer for letting us know it's only zoned for 35 dwelling units. And if it's really an opportunity we want to seize to help alleviate our housing crisis, we should be able to change that. And those are my thoughts right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McMoran.
Thank you. Thank you to the community members that came out. Thank you to staff for the extensive outreach. Thank you to our former, both, I guess, both of our former artist laureates for their work and the various capacities that they've contributed to our community. I'm incredibly grateful for this conversation this evening. I will be very brief. I definitely support housing at this site. I'm leaning towards supporting mixed use there, so there could be a potential revenue source. And I know frequently with housing, you know, there are community spaces, so potentially we could have that or have, you know, some of it accessible to the public and for arts or whatever. Accordingly, I'd support any zoning changes necessary that would facilitate this coming to completion and ensuring that we are doing our part to facilitate and support affordable housing. So I will leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, staff, for the report and everybody who came out and spoke on this. Jesse, you were saying in your comments that, we're talking about revenue generators for the city, probably the highest source of revenue returned to the city would be automotive sales?
That's one of the larger sales tax generators in terms of sales tax per square foot.
Right. So in looking over the list here, I love the idea of housing mixed use. I would love to see something move forward, submit an RFP for commercial, maybe reach out to, I see on one of the things here under other combined with the property next door, reach out to the property owner next door, see if they're interested. I believe that is a car dealer. But to issue an RFP for a combined commercial retail with housing and then some sort of community benefit. I think, you know, we're gonna, we've got to get the most money in return for this. Whether we sell the property or lease it out, I think whatever we do, we need to ensure that we have a constant source of revenue coming back to the city. I don't know that somebody would want to invest a whole lot of money if it's a lease, obviously be a long-term lease, but probably, yeah, a long-term lease. But issue an RFP and having both options, float both options. I don't want to narrow our scope, but to have, you know, option either a long-term lease or to sell the property, and then under commercial retail housing and community benefit. Those are my thoughts. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Puza.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks to the community members who provided public comment and to the community members who provided feedback regarding the future use of the property. Also, special thanks to our city's former and to the current artist laureates for their creative, thoughtful, and beautiful artwork that they did on the property. Art truly has the power to transform not only buildings, but hearts and minds. This was a special item where the prior council configuration voted unanimously to purchase the property and so it would not be used to sell guns near children at schools. So I'm very proud we accomplished this goal. And since it was a community-led decision, it was important that the community helped decide the future use. So again, thanks to all of the community members who participated and to staff for all the time collecting that feedback. You know, we just declared a fiscal emergency, and we have the Jubalo Village, an affordable housing project. And selling the gun store was part of some of the calculations when we were making that decision. So at first, I thought selling the property was the best option, and earmarking 75% or whatever the, whatever the, you know, percentage would be of the profit towards Jubalo Village or the Affordable Housing Trust, and 25% towards infrastructure projects. There's been many requests for sidewalks, alleyways, planting trees, and, you know, that won't cover all of it by any means, but it would be a drop in the bucket. But this way, we are, in a way, using the property towards housing and for our community. And it would be a beautiful story that a former gun store next to elementary school would be transformed into funding for housing for low-income individuals and for infrastructure. But the idea about the potential revenue from a mixed use or retail really piqued my interest. So as my colleague said, I'd be open to looking at, just figuring out the value of the property and also doing RFP for other retail and/or mixed use. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thanks again to the community who came out and spoke, and thanks, Jesse, for your work on this, and all of staff. I think we're all on the same page broadly. We, what I've heard from each of us, the community members, and, you know, in the non-scientific polling that we did, is that housing, ideally affordable housing, retail of some sort, so we can have an ongoing income generation, and ideally, some sort of community space in there. Two of my colleagues mentioned making adjustments in the land use ordinance if necessary. Maybe we can identify ways for density bonus based on community benefit. I don't know if that's offered in that area. And then we have, obviously, our just state and local density bonuses that we have at our disposal. Ideally, and I think, I'm guessing it would probably work best if it's sold, so that we can recoup at least most of the money that we spent on it, and then recapture the rest over time with, hopefully, retail, sales tax, and business license generation. I can make the motion to put all that into an RFP crafted by City Manager's Office, unless there's additional items that my colleagues want to add.
Can you repeat that just for us?
Yeah. Keeping in mind what City Manager said, to keep it as open as possible so that we can hear all proposals and decide ourselves, but priority based on, you know, maybe we could have a ranking, let the applicants know that we are focused on housing, better if it's affordable housing, retail, and community space, whether it's meeting space, whether it's space for Parks and Rec, whether it's arts-focused, whatever it may be. And if we can add density bonus based on community benefit, that would help, if that's possible.
Just, oh, go ahead. Do you want to start?
Yeah, I have a question for Director Munzer, if he's still on the line. Thank you. Sorry to call you back. Do you, are you aware if the changes that we might have, or how we might go about crafting language to indicate that we are open to evaluating the zoning to encourage and support housing? Is that something that would need to be included in the RFP language? Is that something in your experience that you have seen? Would that help ensure that, because I'm assuming, and maybe I should not, but that people will respond to the current zoning that is indicated by our general plan? So I'm just, I'm curious where that piece of the conversation should come in, before, after, or should there be some language indicated in the proposal that there is some openness to that? Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Yes, I would recommend that if the City Council and the city are open to some sort of modification of the site's current zoning, that that is most certainly included in the RFP, so that respondents are cognizant of that when there's so many proposals and doing the math, so to speak, as to, you know, the number of units that could be configured on the site based on its current zoning along with city and state density bonus. But we'd want to have conversations that, of course, that zoning, you know, align with what's already there in terms of mixed use. But yes, I would say include that language in the RFP.
Thank you.
And just adding to that, Director Munzer, do you anticipate any issues with doing it in that order? Meaning, even if we're including that language, we're not being specific about what the zoning is? So the proposals, if I'm a developer, is it going to be challenging to get proposals when the zoning is up in the air?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. That could very well be the case with a developer or respondent. So I'd want to have some conversations with staff prior to the release of the RFP so that we have an understanding of what, how that's being framed in terms of how the zoning can be modified.
Because if it's a situation where--
Because if it's a situation where we need to change the zoning first in order to, or have that conversation first in order to get serious proposals, you know, maybe we need, maybe that's something we need to consider, but that sounds like good.
As you know, a zoning code amendment is a process, is a public carrying process that needs to go through staff review, review by the Planning Commission, and ultimately a recommendation to the city council. So that would be a separate process.
Councilman, just to add my two cents, I think it would be beneficial to include in the RFP an indication of the city's flexibility on this issue. That would, that would probably encourage more proposals, not less. And then, again, just because you seek proposals, this doesn't mean you need to act immediately. You, those proposals that we secure may inform the council as to what the next steps are. Just seeking the proposals, you're not committed to anything just to secure the proposals.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My concern was just if the uncertainty could limit, you know, proposals from certain developers who might see it as a risk if they put, pour a lot of time into, let's say, a more dense building than we, our zoning would allow or, you know, that we would decide to allow.
I think the indication of flexibility will create more interest.
Okay. Any further questions? City Court, are you okay?
I'm fine, thank you. We don't need a motion. It's just direction, correct?
It's direction?
Yeah. We're good?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. We are good.
Ready to roll?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor O'Brien and city council members. The item before each night is for adoption of the Tenant Right to Counsel interim ordinance. Next slide, please. We have a lengthy agenda tonight. First, we're going to go through, give an overview of what the eviction process looks like. Next, we're going to go through our current service model data and program data. We're going to discuss the proposed Tenant Right to Counsel interim ordinance. We're going to compare the current service model with the proposed pilot program. We're going to take a glance at nearby jurisdictions. We're going to discuss data collection, including of notices of termination. We're going to provide some data on unlawful detainer filings. And then we'll go over the outreach materials and accessing services through Betzettic. Next slide, please. This slide gives an overview of the eviction process. HHS staff pulled this information from the court's self-help website. So this is a very broad overview. The eviction process normally starts when the landlord gives the tenant written notice of termination to do something by a deadline. For example, this could be a three-day notice to pay rent or quit or a three-day notice to cure. If the tenant does not perform the noticed action, the landlord can file an eviction case called an unlawful detainer in court. Within 10 days, the tenant must file a response or an answer in court. If the tenant doesn't respond in that 10-day period, the tenant is considered in default and the case can be decided without the tenant's input. Assuming that the tenant does respond, this goes to a judge and a judge makes a decision called a judgment. If the landlord wins, they can request the sheriff post a notice to vacate requiring the tenant move out. Next slide, please. The Rent Control and Tenant Protections Division currently contracts with Betzettic through fiscal year 2029 to provide free legal services, including an up-to-full-scope representation to Culver City tenants. The current contract amount is $153,198. Tenants can access services via a dedicated phone number, email address, and legal clinics. There are no current income restrictions to access services. In 2024, Betzettic completed 107 intakes. 19 cases were provided full-scope legal representation with an average of 41 hours spent per case. A little over 75% of all intakes in 2024 reporting incomes at or below 80% of the area median income. And 85% of full-scope representation cases reported incomes at or below 80% of the area median income. Next slide, please.
Good evening. I am Tevis Barnes, Housing and Human Services Director. I'm going to review with the body and the public the next several slides, particularly as it relates to demographic information. Council, at our previous meeting, had wanted staff to dig a little deeper and to provide more information on demographics. And so we're hoping that the next few slides can help address any questions and concerns that council had from the previous meeting. With us this evening, also, we have representatives from Betzettic who are in the audience if there are additional questions that staff may need a bit of assistance to help. So what you're looking at right now is demographic data representing gender, age, median monthly income, and the number of households with minors for all intakes completed by Betzettic in 2024. As you see here, of the 107 intakes completed in 2024, 69 identified as women and 38 as men. A little under 50% of the intakes reported ages between 30 to 49 with an overall median age of 46. 37 households had minors and the median monthly income was approximately $3,000 a month. That would be possibly $39,000 a year. Additionally, most of the intakes in 2024 are now in closed status. Next slide, please. Here we see a breakdown of 2024 intakes by race, language, and disability status. 50% were white, about 23% were Hispanic, 14% identified as black, almost 4% were Asian, and the remaining identified as other ethnic groups, Native American, or having two or more races or declined to state. The majority, as you will see, were English speakers and about 20% were disabled. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Christina, who will discuss the proposed interim ordinance.
Thank you, Tevis. The Proposed Tenant Right to Counsel interim ordinance that is before you for adoption tonight would establish a 12-month pilot program to provide income-qualified tenants with full-scope legal protections during unlawful detainer or eviction legal proceedings. Income-qualified tenants are tenants at or below 80% of the area median income. The chart on this page shows the income levels based on family size, which qualify as 80% AMI. The proposed ordinance prohibits retaliation and/or harassment against tenants for accessing services. Staff will issue necessary guidelines to implement the pilot program. Staff will also perform outreach and education regarding the provision of services. Staff will use the 12-month pilot period to ramp up services, analyze demand, and determine costs needed to effectively provide services. At the end of the 12-month period, staff will return to the city council with an evaluation of the resources needed to implement a permanent program. Finally, the pilot program is subject to funding availability. Betzettic estimates that approximately $1,230,000 will be needed in the first year to cover the costs for providing full-scope legal representation for eviction proceedings. This amount would cover onboarding additional staff, up to seven attorneys and four non-attorney positions. And I'll turn it back over to Tevis for the remaining slides.
Hello again. For the sake of the public, I am Tevis Barnes, Housing and Human Services Director. The slide we're looking at now can also be found in the staff report for council members to review and also for members who are, community members who are at home. Here is a comparison of our current service model where we contract with Betzettic to provide full legal services to tenants for various housing issues, including full-scope representation for eviction defense and our proposed service model, which is the contract with Betzettic and the Tenant Right to Counsel pilot program. Under our current contract, all tenants are eligible to access services. But due to limited capacity and resources, not all tenants may receive full representation for eviction defense. However, the proposed service model requires that tenants who are at 80% of AMI or area median income or below be provided with full-scope legal representation for eviction defense. All other tenants can continue to access services such as advice and counsel, limited scope assistance in legal clinics. The current contract with Betzettic for fiscal year 2024, as Christina mentioned, is approximately $153,000. Under the proposed service model, Betzettic anticipates needing a little over $1.2 million to cover the cost of the 12-month program. Staff currently collects data on the use of services but will use the 12-month pilot program as a ramp-up period to study the program demand and usage rates, data collection, and identify actual service costs in comparison of a permanent program. Can we have the next slide, please? I think it's important that we look at what other jurisdictions are currently doing as we move forward in our decision-making. This slide shows nearby jurisdictions who have adopted or introduced a Tenant Right to Counsel program, which includes Los Angeles County and the City of Los Angeles, as well as the stay-house LA County program, which services the entire county. We have made an update to this chart to call out that prior to these programs going into effect, there was a ramp-up period allowing for the evaluation of need and costs required to provide services. An additional update from the last month is that the City of Los Angeles has officially adopted their program. Each of these programs require full-scope legal representation be provided to income-eligible tenants for eviction defense. One key difference with the stay-house Los Angeles program is that they also provide rental assistance to their affected tenants. But because their program covers the entirety of Los Angeles County, their resources can be limited. They prioritize services to certain tenants that have been deemed more vulnerable and focus on certain zip codes. They also work with other cities that have made a request that they serve their city to administer their right to counsel program, such as the City of Long Beach. Also, they've made it very clear to us and they've shared with us that not all tenants are able to receive service under their program because of program-limited resources. May we have the next slide, please? I want to discuss data collection with, to notices of termination. The Tenant Protection Ordinance requires landlords to submit all copies of notices of termination to the Rent Control and Tenant Protection Program within five days after serving the notice of termination on the tenant. In 2024, there were 989 notices of termination submitted, of which 740, or about 75%, were related to non-payment of rent. It should be noted that when this number was shared with, by staff last month, it was based on the fiscal year. However, staff wanted to ensure data shared for the notices of termination was representative of the data shared from Betzettic as noticed at the same time period provided by Betzettic. As noted earlier, there are other notices involved in the eviction process. So as we did mention, there is the notice of termination, but there's also the unlawful detainer notice or summons and complaints, which are filed in the court, and the notice to evict, which are typically issued by the sheriff after a judgment. The city does not currently collect any of these other notices and to date have not collected these types of notices. However, Betzettic has shared some data with staff related to the Los Angeles County Superior Court's eviction filings, which we will discuss at the next slide. So may I have the next slide? So as you will see, it's broken down by quarters for 2024. The LA Superior Court noted there were 272 filings from unlawful detainers. So what Betzettic did is looked at the various zip codes in Culver City. So the filings that you see on this chart represent unlawful detainers filed in Los Angeles Superior Court for the zip codes of 90230, 90231, 90232, and 90066. But it must be kept in mind that some of these zip codes, we also share with Los Angeles. So this does not fully represent only Culver City unlawful filings, unlawful detainer filings, but some may have been captured from the City of Los Angeles as well. May I have the next slide, please? Outreach is key so that tenants are aware that the program is available. And so the city staff is working with our outreach consultant, Truppepe, to develop what we hope is a robust outreach plan, which will include a 1.5-minute animated video, letting people know about the program. What you're looking at right now is a decision tree so that folks can know if this program is something that they are eligible for or that will assist them with their situation. Of course, there'll be social media posts and gov delivery emails, as well as a dedicated webpage on the city's website. These will all be the outreach efforts that city staff will engage in to inform the public of the Right to Counsel program. Next slide, please. We just want to take an opportunity to demonstrate how tenants can access legal services through Betzettic, including assistance under the Right to Counsel program. Tenants can use the dedicated phone line, email, or QR codes to access services. We're going to leave this up here just for a bit. We're going to leave this up here just for a bit in case there are folks at home who want to gather this information for themselves, or they want to share this with other folks. And of course, you can always reach out to the Housing and Human Services Department, our Rent Control Division. May we have the next slide, please, which Christina will briefly address?
Thanks, Tevis. The proposed motions described in the staff report are, one, to adopt an interim ordinance establishing a tenant right to counsel program for a period of 12 months, and, two, if desired, direct the city manager regarding additional funding for the program in the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your report. Questions from council?
Thank you so much, City Attorney Stoffers and Director Barnes. Sorry?
Burrows.
I'm so sorry, Burrows.
You know, that happens all the time.
My goodness.
I email her, Krista, for Christina Stoffers all the time.
You know, I wish I could say it's super late, but it's only, you know, 10 o'clock, and we're already losing it. Thank you, City Attorney Stoffers and Director Barnes.
Burrows.
Burrows. All right, I'm out. Second time, can't do it. All right. Thank you. I really appreciate all the work that went into it, even though we're losing our minds. I'm losing my mind. The, this item came forward because we had a desire to address our housing crisis, and it came from not just, not just a reaction to our, the wildfires that have, were exacerbating that crisis, but just in general, housing costs have been exploding here. So I really appreciate how quickly this came back from, from both departments and the collaboration that came from, came out of this. And just to kind of give some context to folks, you know, 5% of, of tenants facing eviction are, have access to an attorney or represented by an attorney compared to 80% of landlords. And so when we're talking about ways we can stop the flow into homelessness, this feels particularly actionable. But I'll save my comments. I just want to ask, you know, you had that helpful slide above, you know, showing the, the different stages of the eviction process, and it's, it's, you showed that we are tracking the notices of termination, but not the UDs. Is that something that we could, and also not tracking the notices to vacate? Is that something that the council could do if we, you know, if, if the city wanted to have a better understanding of the number of actual evictions as opposed to just the notices of termination, which folks can resolve within three days, right? If we wanted to do that, could we?
I might need legal counsel to opine on this if I'm incorrect.
Or would that be helpful, I guess, is the better question?
Well, I think it would be helpful for us in our data collection, because as you see from the, the data collected by Betsedak based upon zip codes, it's very difficult for us to distill out what are exactly Culver City addresses. And so mixed in that number are folks from LA. And, you know, as we look at that, we don't know what percentage is Culver City and what percentage is Los Angeles. So for us to develop our program and to understand our program, I think it's important that we know that data. But again, I would need legal to opine that legally can we include in our ordinance a requirement that owners, once they file an unlawful detainer or UD, if they are required to give a copy of that to the city? We are going to be coming back to council to do some cleanup for our rent control ordinance, and so that could be something that's addressed during that time. But I would need legal to confirm if that's, if we can collect those notices.
Okay. That's really helpful to know, because it sounds like the 272 UDs that Betsedak is using to base their cost estimate on might have some folks that don't live in Culver City. So thank you, Director Barnes, for, like, illuminating that. So it sounds like there's a problem of just, like, data, data collection that maybe we can address somehow. And this came back, we asked, you know, we asked staff in the last meeting to just use the existing budget, right, for, for this new program, for this pilot program? And what we got back was this answer of, like, well, we really can't just use the existing budget. It would cost 1.2. So now we're reacting to this, this new number. And I, I wanted to ask, has the city explored any other options, for example? And, and would that be something that we could ask for if, if we wanted to see how this proposal compares to others, such as the city doing it in-house, for example? And, and, and using our existing and attorney staff, but also hiring as needed? Or, for example, contracting with stay housed LA? This is the only path we've explored so far, right?
I will, I'll jump in on the first one. As to doing it in-house in the city attorney's office, our client is the City of Culver City, so there would likely be conflicts if we were to represent individual tenants. And I'm not aware of any other cities bringing that in-house likely for that very reason.
Okay. Thank you. So, but we could, for example, solicit proposals from other providers who are not the city, in your view?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Burrows. So that, oh, and then I saw on the date in the ordinance that we're considering tonight, it says a May 16 or, or mid-May start date. Could that change if we were to pursue this in the budget process, for example? I guess this is a question for Ms. Burrows. Could that change if we, for example, decided to put this into the, into the next budget cycle, the one, the upcoming budget cycle, and we wanted to do a 12-month pilot period starting there? Could we pass this ordinance, for example, and then come back and, and extend it to be a full 12 months then? So it doesn't expire on, before the 12 months is over?
Council at any point can change the duration of the ordinance. The item before you tonight is for adoption, that second reading. So if council wanted to make substantive changes to that ordinance, council would have to, tonight, council would have to reintroduce the ordinance tonight and then bring it back for a second reading or adoption at a subsequent meeting. Another option could be for council to give direction as part of the rent control tenant protections cleanup item that's coming forward in a few months, and staff could fold amendments to the, the tenant right to counsel program into the cleanup.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. And could, what types of other revenue sources could be used in this event? Have we explored the legality and of, of, of using other revenue sources as opposed to general fund? Or is, is that an ongoing?
That's an, an ongoing consideration. We can certainly look at whether any other sources of existing revenue could be used to pay for tenant right to counsel program. At this point, the only sure thing is the general fund, but we could certainly look at other options.
Okay. Thank you. And looking forward to comments from colleagues in the public, and I'll hold my comments until after.
I'll wait till after proper comments.
Ms. Mayor, questions?
Question. Tevis and Christina, thank you all so much. Have we determined from a staff level if there's really a need for such program to be amplified or to be sort of added to? I mean, with, with what we have right now in place, as well as the landlord tenant mediation board, has there been a need above and beyond that that we're aware of?
I'll go ahead and start, and Christina may want to add. This wouldn't necessarily be something for the landlord tenant mediation board, who really only oversee rent increases. This would deal with folks who've been served an unlawful detainer and they're heading into eviction defense. I can give you statistically right now, Betsedak, from our slides, had 107 intakes. And of that number, there were 19 full representation for legal defense due to an unlawful detainer. And those take about 41 hours. And currently, they do not have the capacity. So not everyone, they may get limited representation, or they may get full representation, but they don't have the capacity now to meet the demand, because 41 hours is, you know, that's a work week for most folks. So based upon that information, currently, they do not have the capacity to serve everyone.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
But I should also add, though, currently, our program, though, there is no income qualifier.
Qualifier, right.
So currently, we're serving everyone regardless of income. That could possibly reduce, and that's why the ramp-up period is important, so we can understand that if we're only focusing on folks at 80% of area median income, or maybe even 50% of area median income. But they, Betsedak has also stated that of their 19 cases, 85%, which is a good large number, are at 80% of AMI and below.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tevis. I have a couple other questions that I'll fold into my comments, but that's it for me right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Puza.
Thank you. Do we know how long on average it takes for a tenant to get assigned an attorney or whoever they're working with to get full scope services?
Are you asking how long it, so we currently, under our contract with Betsedak, we pay for one full-time attorney dedicated to our city. So are you saying how long does it take that attorney to respond to someone who has an unlawful detainer?
On average, obviously, it varies, right? Because if they're five at one time, it's going to take longer versus?
If council does not mind, I would have to ask Betsedak if they could answer that question.
Please.
And they are here with us so that they could provide that information.
Hi, good evening, council members. I'm Diego Cartan, President and CEO of Betsedak Legal Services. I have with me Mary Ross, our Vice President of Legal Programs, and on the phone, we have Amy Williams, who is actually the head of our Housing and Homelessness Program. And so I want to first check with Amy Williams to see if she'd like to respond to the question before I jump in.
Good afternoon, council. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we are. Yes, we can.
Thank you. The short answer to Vice Mayor Puza's question is because the deadline to answer an unlawful detainer recently changed from five days last year, as of 2020, beginning of 2025, it's now 10 days. We are very used to responding and offering full scope representation when we're able to within five days, because we generally have to meet a filing deadline.
Did you say five days? Okay. Thank you. And under our current process, do we know how many requests for full scope representation were denied?
I'm happy to answer that question again. We don't, based on the current data that we have within our system. That's not something that we track, because everyone has provided some level of service. So it was something that we would have had to manually sift through our data in order to determine that, and we just weren't able to do that on the deadline. I did pull a representative sample just from the 2024 cases, the 107 cases that we had. I looked at 15 random cases, and of those 15, two of the cases were eviction cases, unlawful detainees that were filed. One got full scope representation, one did not. The remaining 13 cases were not eviction cases. They were rent increases, security deposits, notices to terminate tenancy, offers to move out. So there were not cases where an eviction had been filed.
Thank you. Thank you. And for, thank, yep, for the, for Ms. Barnes, is there a way to reconfigure the current way we're doing things to, and our services to areas where there's more need?
Are you saying to do something similar to stay housed LA where they focus on certain census tracts or certain folks at certain income levels? Is that where you're intending?
Or if there's less, let's say the weekly clinics are not popular, or, and we can put more of that energy into full scope representation, vice versa? I'm just trying to stretch the limited funds that we have.
I, I see. So I think the best way to look at that is to, let's look at the numbers. And I'm sorry, folks at home, I'm going to be throwing out a lot of numbers. So the clinics are probably about three hours, three and a half hours a week, and that will probably calculate about 14 hours in a month. And on average, about six folks attend those, so that's like 24 folks. So you're providing some level of service to folks for a variety of issues, not just evictions, for 14 hours. Whereas one household needs 41 hours on average for full scope representation for legal defense. So even if we eliminated all the clinics, it would take you a while to get to the 41 hours to help that one, whereas those 24 get nothing.
Fair. Thank you. And last question. If we go another route of the requirement, if we were to do that, if it was allowable to require the eviction, the final eviction record, is there any teeth to that? Because are we going to know that they, the landlord, is it just on, you know, goodwill that they're going to show that to the city?
Well, it's no different than them providing us the notice of termination, which is part of the, our rent control ordinance. But remember, if they fail to do that, and believe me, I think some tenants will probably make us aware, there are ramifications for failure to adhere to the ordinance.
Got it. Great. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to be sure I'm clear with the jargon. Notice of unlawful detainer is, is that the same as a notice of eviction effectively?
So tonight, we've been referring to notices of termination. These are the notices that landlords provide to tenants, saying you need to pay, you know, rent that's owed, you need to cure some violation of the lease. Separately, within that, we've been sort of, I don't think we've been consistent with how we've been referring to unlawful detainees. But an unlawful detainer is the legal case that's filed against a tenant. At the initiation of the legal, legal case, the landlord has to serve the tenant with summons and complaint. I think that's the, the, that's the filing or document that Vice Mayor Puza and Council Member Fish were asking, you know, can we require those filings to be provided to the city, just like we currently require the notices of termination, or those three-day notices to quit, to be provided to the city? And then there's a third document that we talked about tonight, which is the notice to vacate. That's at the conclusion of the UD case, the, the document that the sheriff's department uses to... The document that the sheriff's department uses to actually evict the tenant.
So, okay, I'm glad you brought that up, that was my next question. Isn't that a legal document that we could pull, PRA, know what those numbers are?
We have a very difficult time getting specific documents from the courts, in part because of the privacy interests of the tenants involved. The courts have provided aggregated information to Betzettic in response to public records act requests. But, yeah, due to the sensitivity of UD actions, we have a difficult time getting specific notices. And it would also take a lot of staff time to figure out that a UD was filed, and then to actually go to the court and, and get the record.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, did you say, Ms. Barnes, it was 74% of unlawful detainers are due to past due rent?
Correct, so it was around 75%.
75%, okay. And then both LA County and StayHoused LA County are, they off, both of them offer full scope, but both of them are overburdened. Is that correct?
It's my understanding from information we've retained from StayHoused LA that they are overburdened. The city of Los Angeles just recently adopted theirs. And the county, we don't have any statistics. I believe they've just introduced their program.
They just introduced it as well, okay. And it's not only for unincorporated, it's for the entire county?
Through StayHoused, StayHoused LA is for the entire county.
What about the LA County program?
If I have it correct, and maybe Betzettic has to help me, I think LA County deals with unincorporated, and StayHoused LA deals with the whole county. But Betzettic can correct me if I'm wrong.
I want to give my colleague Amy an opportunity to jump in, just in case she wants to. You'll have to forgive this, council member, she's in Australia.
I know, I want to say, she's in Australia right now. What time is it in Australia?
Thank you.
I won't say goodbye.
It is 3:00 PM in the afternoon right now, so it's fine to be here. Thank you, on Tuesday. So to answer Mayor Brown's question, the LA County right to counsel is for unincorporated LA County residents. StayHoused LA serves the entire county regardless of city or jurisdiction. But it's prioritized via zip codes. And that information is publicly available. None of the zip codes in Culver City are currently priority zip codes in StayHoused LA.
Mayor O'Brien, if I may?
Yeah.
One important factor here is that StayHoused LA is the program run by nonprofit institutions to cover all of LA County and City of LA. So it's, it's, it's the vehicle through which LA County and City of LA's right to counsel program is, is being carried out, if you will.
I understand, thank you. Okay, that's all the questions I have for now. Do we have, oh, are we good? Okay, do we have any speakers?
We have 11.
11, okay, great.
Our first speaker is David Cashian, followed by Janine Wasniewski-Stalen.
Good evening, council. David Geishun, Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. We appreciate the careful thought the council is dedicating to this important issue. As part of your ongoing deliberations, we want to highlight some of the newly provided cost estimates from Betzettic. According to the report, fully implementing the newly expanded Right to Counsel pilot program would require a $1.67 million investment in the first year, including the addition of seven attorneys and three paralegals. This would be a tremendous increase to the funding approved under the existing contract signed last year that was intended to run for five years. The report states that for each existing full representation case, an attorney works a total of 41.1 hours, on average. Given the hourly rates associated with such legal fees, ranging from $250 to $350 per hour, this suggests a per-case cost of roughly $10,000 to over $14,000 in comparison. We know from the Los Angeles City Controller that the average amount of unpaid rent resulting in eviction filings is around $3,750. This means that the city could spend less than half the amount by providing rental assistance to eliminate rent that is owed and obtain a full dismissal, rather than paying for an attorney to merely argue about it and delay, delay an eviction. It seems a far more reasonable spending of limited city funding to immediately establish a rental assistance program for low-income renters facing eviction due to non-payment of rent resulting from sudden illness, injury, or job loss. The program could be further tailored to apply only to renters that have experienced direct financial impacts due to the wildfires in order to better target limiting funding. We also note that only 272 evictions cases were filed citywide over the past year, roughly 1.5% of the city's renters, renter households, and far lower than the statewide average of 2.2%. If the city paid the rent for every one of those cases through the rental assistance, rather than hiring attorneys, the total cost to the city would likely be far lower than drastically expanding the Right to Counsel program. It would also provide far better and more certain outcomes for renters and rental housing providers. We appreciate the city council's direct desire to assist renters, especially those impacted by recent wildfires. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janine Wasniewski-Stalen, followed by Steve Segal.
Hi, I switched to a headset, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. First of all, this is not my area of expertise. I don't think it is anybody's up there on the dais. So I think that's why this is especially interesting conversation. I do want to, before I begin any other comments, if anyone in the entertainment industry is facing a hardship or an eviction, or needs money to pay rent, they can go to what's called the Entertainment Fund, used to be called the Actors Fund. The Entertainment Fund not only helps people with job searches and training people for new jobs, but they also help people who are in financial hardship. So just wanted to pass that along, because we have a lot of people in the entertainment industry in Culver City. Regarding this, I do have a question. I'm wondering, and I, the horrible fires that affected so many people in Los Angeles County, but I am, just a question, wondering why the ordinance is so focused on the fires? And if this is actually intended to help people who are facing eviction and using the fires as a introduction to that, why don't we just go straight to the matter? Which is the idea that there are some folks who want to, rightly want to help people who are in hardship. That's just a question. So when you decide what to do, I think there's an interesting conversation. But I would just like to remind everyone that the beginning of this meeting, we did talk about the fiscal emergency. And are going to put that on the ballot to help us out of our fiscal emergency. So I think we have to be mindful of that when any decision is being made. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Segal, followed by Ron Ostrom.
Excellent, thank you very much. Is it two minutes?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Please don't call this a pilot program. Let's refer to what it is, is a $1.2 to $1.7 million program. Again, this gets into the, what are we spending money on? I'm not sure I understand, I'm not an expert either, but it feels like Culver City residents are paying for other people's legal representation. And in some cases, when they didn't pay their rent, is the landlord at fault here? I'm not sure. This seems to be a program that will make it very difficult for landlords to exist. Also, you give income data, what about the incomes of the landlords? Many landlords have two or three apartments or less. Their income might not be very high. So it seems like what it is, and the ability for people to stretch things out and make it very difficult for landlords, when the tenant may be in the wrong. As Janine said, maybe there's other ways to, to seek help if help is needed. But it just seems like a system set up to pay for other people's legal fees when it, that, that might not be the right thing to do. Maybe they didn't pay their rent. Why should they be able to do that? And it brings up the question, what other things that current city residents can get for free that has nothing to do with anything else? So, I mean, everyone would like something for free from other Culver City residents. Is this the right way to spend money when the tenant might be at fault? Doesn't seem fair. Number two, I'd like to mention something that came up about Culver City residents participating in the process here. People are busy, especially people with kids. I asked the council to use a baseline way to gauge things. Is it protecting whatever you're doing? If people aren't involved enough, does it protect the current quality of life of residents? The current quality of life. Adding thousands of more residents does not help the current quality of life of Culver City residents. Things get more dense, they get more stressful. Lastly, Mr. Puzza just brought up something, it's not a fair comparison. Selling the land at the gun store location would probably be a loss.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ronald Ostrom, with one minute seated by Leslie Ostrom, followed by Thomas Lester.
Hi, I'm sorry, I was muted there. It's Ronald Ostrom. I'm an attorney, I've done unlawful detainer law. I'm also very familiar with Betzettic. Wonderful organization. They do great work in the, running the conservatorship clinic for the LA Superior Court. They fight, they basically prepare the petitions for the majority of limited conservatorships here in LA County, and they do a fabulous job. And what they're doing now is probably more of inadequate for what Culver City needs. Keep in mind that what they're providing is like triage. And what I'm sure they do is they file full representation for those tenants who most need it and deserve it. Because unfortunately, it's clear that the council doesn't understand the unlawful detainer procedure. It's a summary proceeding with, with narrow issues. And a lot of it is all about the notice to quit, which is the real document which initiates the process of get, an unlawful detainer. You cannot file a complaint until you've given the client notice of what the default is and an opportunity to cure it. Okay? And more than often than not, it's a rather clear thing. Did they pay the rent, or didn't they pay it? And if they file a response, if they don't pay it, they'll receive a summons and complaint. And they will have an opportunity to file an answer, which Betzettic can easily provide them the form to file, file the answer. And that's what they do all the time in the conservatorship proceeding. And that prevents the default. So the need for full representation, in most cases, is absolutely unnecessary. A terrifically exorbitant expenditure, I calculate about $6,000 per tenant, when in fact, if they file the summons, if they file the answer, which they can do with the assistance of Betzettic without full representation, they have the opportunity to talk to the judge or try to negotiate a payment plan to bring the rent current. But what full representation does is make it extraordinarily difficult for the landlord, who is paying, having to pay for his own attorney, while not getting the rent. And that is so unfair. And I hope the city attorney all tells you about California Civil Code Section 1717, which generally provides for reciprocal attorney's fees and contract disputes. That means that if a contract includes a clause stating that the prevailing party in a lawsuit to enforce a contract will be awarded fees, the clause is interpreted as applying to both parties. So any tenant who has a valid defense could get an attorney, and that attorney can get paid if the landlord made a mistake.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Lester, followed by Meg Sullivan. Not seeing them in chamber or online. Our next speaker is Meg Sullivan, with one minute seated by Steve Rowe.
When we were little kids, we had a hard time grasping the concept that the world was round. We'd look around, and everything seemed flat. The floor, the ground, the horizon. But even as little kids, we eventually were able to grasp two truths at once. My name is Meg Sullivan, and I'm a local housing provider. And I'm here tonight to ask you to use that muscle you honed when you were a kid and grasp two truths at the same time when it comes to right to counsel that's publicly funded. Yes, the program tends to prolong the amount of time that a tenant stays in the unit after an eviction filing. But ultimately, the vast amount of these tenants end up having to leave their units anyway. Because it's against the law not to pay the rent or to harass fellow tenants. And the benefit for one small group comes at a very steep price, which we've learned this evening. Not just for the city, but for the owners, costing them tens of thousands of dollars in unnecessary legal fees and lost rent. And those bruising experiences often become the straw that breaks the camel's back, causing owners to throw up their hands and leave the business. I've seen this with my friends. Later, their property either gets redeveloped as more, as a more expensive housing type, or purchased by stricter, ruthless owners. That's why right to counsel programs are ineffective use of public funds. If the city budget has an additional $1 to $2 million extra, and that's a big question, emergency rent relief is the way to go. Not only has research shown this to be the case, but it's consistent with the city's own experience. Both the onset, both during the onset of the COVID pandemic and prior to the dissolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency, the city offered such immediate help, and by all accounts, it worked. Certainly, we all saw homelessness explode statewide after the funding source dried up in 2012. Look beyond the appearances of the situation for the truth of right to counsel. If you have the money, do emergency rent relief. Thanks for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Kira Push, followed by Josh Kamali.
Just wanted to voice my support for this proposal. As Bubba mentioned, there is a significant nationwide disparity for legal representation between landlords and tenants. And in response to that, the proposed model seems to really ensure that tenants who most need the financial assistance, and who are especially vulnerable to unfair evictions, will get access to the legal services they need, ultimately helping to close the huge gap in resource availability between landlords and tenants. I know Culver City is already doing a pretty decent job providing a number of legal services through Betzettic. But with people potentially being denied full representation due to limited capacity, there's clearly room for improvement. And by that, I mean room to help prevent people from having their lives upended or their mental and physical health endangered by losing access to stable housing. I am really grateful that this council seems committed to housing affordability. And I think a 12-month trial period is an opportunity to more intentionally collect data that can inform future decisions and ongoing discussions on this topic. As a final note, I just want to say that the first speaker's comments were extremely cogent, and I fully agree with them, as well as those in favor of rent relief. Because studies show that time and time again, improving housing stability for tenants is huge local fiscal benefits for the community. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Josh Kamali, followed by Kevin Lechoff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to speak about two issues on this topic, the notion of co-pays and the study that you do for a landlord. Landlords pay $10,000 in an eviction. You guys can attest to that. If not, I can show you landlord bills. The state allows any defendant to request a jury trial. The amount of money you pay your attorney to go to a jury trial adds up to $10,000 when all is said and done. Landlords don't get attorneys, and tenants don't not get attorneys. Landlords pay tens of thousands of dollars for attorneys. There is no other public benefit, very few, that are free. SNAP, formerly food stamps, there's a cost sharing. Section eight housing vouchers, there's a cost share. Medicare, there's a cost share. Medicaid, there's a cost share. The city and county don't do this, but Culver City can do better. Culver City could say, if the landlord's paying tens of thousands of dollars for their attorney, you can pay $50 for the attorney we give you. It prevents waste, it prevents fraud, it prevents abuse, because you all know when you get something free, you don't take it as seriously. So if we're going to give attorneys to people, we can require them to take a few dollars out of their pocket and make sure they're serious about that defense they put forward. The second thing I want to talk about is the study that you do. You've heard that mom and pop landlords are getting killed. If you're going to study how this impacts tenants, why not study the impact on mom and pop attorneys specifically, excuse me, mom and pop landlords, how much their costs are going up? Those are the two things I'd like to leave with you folks tonight. And I also agree wholeheartedly about, don't throw more money at attorneys, give people money for rent to stay in their homes, because the attorney's not going to keep you in your house if you haven't paid rent. They're just going to delay the inevitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Lechoff, followed by Denise Neal.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your time, council members, mayor and vice mayor. I wanted to speak tonight on my own opinion, not as representative of any organization. Item A1 was to declare a fiscal emergency and approve putting a new tax on the ballot. I'd like to let that sit in the air for a moment longer. You've just declared a fiscal emergency. I don't think you take that lightly, but to contemplate from moving from an existing $160,000 tenant counseling program to a right to counsel program adding over $1 million to the budget is not fiscal responsibility. Seven new attorneys, four new administrative staff. The staff report is clear. This will come from the general fund and would increase the existing structural deficit in the general fund. I would be remiss not to point out that there are numerous tenant advocacy groups already providing legal services to aggrieve tenants, as well as attorneys that will take on cases on a contingency basis at no out-of-pocket costs when they see a landlord being flagrantly abusive to a tenant. The city has already got the Betzettic program. I urge you to continue to provide the community with the robust community services it already does and refrain from this new expenditure. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Denise Neal.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and community at large. I'm in agreement with most of the speakers that actually spoke up on these issues, but my concern is that a lot of, Betzettic's a great program. I know a lot about it, but I also know about AGLA and the AOA, and I think that it would be more cost-effective to try to put preventative measures in place and use arbitration and mediation. And like Mr. Ostrin said, create a triage. Who really needs it? Are you suffering because you've hit hardship? Was there a major disaster? Do you need a reasonable accommodation because your health has failed? Or what is the problem? Why is this rent not getting paid? Or are you just, you know, a really bad tenant just to be a problem? Those things need to be actually sorted out first, and then before a landlord gets to the point where they have to take a start in unlawful detainer case, they should actually work with Betzettic. Well, AGLA, AOA, and Betzettic should probably have a program to where they can train the mom and pop owners and other small owners who are not getting their rents to find out what their responsibility is legally, to make sure that they're in compliance with ADA laws and things like that, and make sure that tenant and landlord's rights and responsibilities are fully understood before they get to that point. But before they go to, you know, fighting in court, they really should sit down and try to mediate, and the funding should go to making sure the landlord recuperates any losses. And the housing incentive program funds that aren't being used should probably be used to help the landlords right now, because apparently, nobody's participating in the HIP program. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks to the speakers. Councilman Fish, you have any comments?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thank you to staff, and thank you to everyone who came out to speak tonight. You know, we talked about the disparity between tenants and landlords when it comes to getting, getting legal counsel, and how 5% of tenants facing eviction are represented by an attorney compared to 80% of landlords. It's also, I think, worth noting that landlords typically earn more than $35,000 a year, more than tenants do. So there's, there's obviously, you know, an imbalance in resources which can make tenants vulnerable to unfair and illegal evictions. I also understand the voices advocating for direct rental assistance. You know, to me, this is one tool that can be used when appropriate and when it's most helpful. We, we know we spend more money when folks become homeless than if we are to prevent them from becoming homeless. So that is really what this is about, is preventing the flow into homelessness. In criminal cases, the U.S. Constitution guarantees the right to attorney, but evictions are civil cases, so this guarantee doesn't apply. And we know that evictions are often traumatic events that can impact your credit score, can make it harder to lease a new apartment and get a new job, and it can be the very event that pushes a person into homelessness. So I don't think this should preclude a direct assistance program. And I understand, you know, our resources are limited, so we can't, you know, fund everything at 100%. But I would love to see this as an option in our rent, renters' protection, our tenants' protection program, as another tool that can be used to prevent homelessness in the event that someone is evicted, because we know that not all evictions are, as we saw in the chart, there's a chunk of evictions that are not related to lapsed rent payment. That's still a significant amount. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't feel like we need to go into the housing crisis here. I think we all take it seriously, and I've, we went into that last time too, but we are obviously in a tremendous housing crisis. Rents are now $3,300 to $3,500 a month median rent. You have to have $130,000 for that not to be rent burdened, for that not to rent burden you. And this program has seen success. In San Francisco, 5,400 San Franciscans, 92% of tenants who utilize the program remained housed due to this program, and 63% stayed in their original unit. So what I'm hoping for out of this discussion is that we can pass this program. And obviously, this is the first time we're hearing about the steep price tag. This is the first time we're discussing it. I think it warrants way more information and discussion before we commit to that. I would personally love to see other options presented to us. Obviously, appreciate and, you know, respect the work of Betzettic, who's been a great partner of ours for a long time. Would also just love to, considering the cost of this program, see how that compares to stay housed L.A. and other providers. So with that, yeah, I would love to see if my colleagues would be amenable to passing this ordinance as written to create the program, and then directing staff to reach out to other providers, to do our due diligence, and deliver some options to council to consider in our budget process this summer. And some of those options perhaps could be even reducing the scope of services. For example, right now, our suggestion was 80% AMI, because that's what other cities are doing. But if, for example, Betzettic were to tell us, oh, well, we could, you know, if we limited the clients even more, perhaps we could limit the cost. And so just having a menu of options, I think, would be really interesting for us as a council to consider. That way, it's not just 1.2 million or bust. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Thank you so much for all the work that went into this. City staff, very grateful, and just for all the information you've provided. And thank you to Betzettic for your detailed report as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman McMoran.
Thank you. Thank you to staff for their presentation. Returning this item very quickly. Thanks to our community members for your comments as well. You know, I clearly support, and I brought this item at the beginning of this year, shortly after the wildfires, as an agenda item. As we know, we had a housing crisis in the region, in L.A. County, really in the state, but in the region, prior to the fires. And the wildfires exacerbated and caused billions of dollars of, and lost houses and tons of trauma, not only to folks who are directly impacted, but to, you know, really all of us in L.A. County bearing witness to this natural disaster as a result, as a direct result of climate change. So the goal for me continues to be, how do we combat homelessness? How do we support and make amendments to create housing, to ensure that there is housing at all income levels in our community? And for me, the goal, as someone, I say this a lot, because I think it's important to lift it up, particularly as we have this conversation, but as someone who has experienced housing insecurity, the goal for me is to keep folks housed. Councilmember Fish just lifted up that it is the fact that it is far more expensive to get folks off of the street than it is to simply prevent folks from becoming homeless, which we see in tons of data from across the county. And I think what's really important, that I'm, I'm not sure it's been directly stated, but the power dynamic that is inherent in landlord-tenant relationships is being addressed here. And there's lots of best practices and things that have been learned from other cities that show that programs like this are supportive and helpful. I think a pilot would be really helpful for us to support data collection and ensure that the programs that we are having, which are fairly new, and I'm so grateful that we have a Office of Housing Homelessness Services in Culver City, which is still relatively new, but the impact cannot be understated in terms of what we've been able to do in our community. So ensuring that with the pilot, we can move nimbly, we can ensure that we are narrowly tailoring the services that we have in response to the current needs of our community. So I support this moving forward. I do think we should do our due diligence and ensure that, you know, we're reaching out to folks who are engaged in this kind of work, just to ensure that, you know, we're getting, I don't know if it needs to be a formal RFP. I don't know what the process is. I would defer to staff in terms of what that process might be to get more information from other folks who also offer similar services. But I think that this is a really critical step. And I do, you know, one thing that I feel continually gets lifted up in terms of, because I was able to sort of look back in terms of some of the prior general fund forecasts for the city, and we've had some budget gaps in our forecast, like going back to 2015, that didn't look super great, and also just looking back at the one from 2021. So we've, you know, budget, this is, I think fear is a big motivator for a lot of folks. Folks want us to believe that we can't take care of one another, that it is impossible to spend money on programs like this that we know would tangibly help folks, would help families, would help community members that are right here in Culver City right now. I know that some folks say that we should focus on folks who are already here. These are folks who are already here. And issues with the budget and structural deficits, at least in Culver City, probably for most cities, is not unique. And we do have information on our website that speaks to that, and you can look back to previous 10-year forecast models from the past, just to sort of, again, contextualize the conversations that we're having. And, you know, the sales tax, in order for us to put the sales tax on this mail-in ballot, we had to declare a fiscal state of emergency. So I think, I think that's going to be a communications nightmare. But at any rate, I think it's really important that we support neighbors staying housed. I think it's really important that we are data-driven as much as possible. So having that information so we can come back and ensure that what we are doing is effective, and having the intention that, that we hope to have, and ensuring that folks stay housed. So yeah, I'm excited about this moving forward. I'm excited about supporting families in Culver City, and I'm looking forward to this project moving forward this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rivera.
Thank you, staff, for this and for the report, and everybody who came out and spoke. I don't know that it's so much of a budget shortfall fear as a budget shortfall reality. I don't know that staff is pulling any punches with us or trying to pull the rug over our eyes and have us worry about something that isn't actually there. It is actually there. So it is a reality. It's not fear, and it's really easy, it seems like, to spend other people's money without worrying about it and say, well, we can, we have a shortfall, we can make up for it. But I look at it as being an elected official, it's my money. And how can I be fiscally responsible and fiscally disciplined with my money? And this, to me, is not, you know, I don't know what's going to come up during the budget session, but we're already talking about 16-plus million dollars for a project that we know that's not going to be the total sum. They're going to continually, as costs go up across the board now with tariffs left and right, and the cost of construction, and I don't even know where that money is going to end, or where it's going to come from, to be honest with you. I understand the program, and we don't really even know if there's a need to invest this $1 million-plus into an additional restructuring of the program. I like Josh's, um, sorry, Josh, your comments about maybe a steady impact on the landlords, the mom and pop landlords. For whatever reason, there's this conception, I believe, and in talking to folks, that our local mom and pop landlords, so to speak, are these evil no-do-gooders that are sleeping on mattresses full of money, and we can just pull it out from underneath and pay all these costs that continue to go up, and we can't really collect them on the back end. It's not, it's not the case. I mean, for the most part, the small mom and pop landlords in the city that provide true affordable housing are hurting. They truly, truly are hurting, and no landlord wants to go through an eviction process. So the last thing anybody wants to do, because it just continues to cost more money that you're not recouping from rent. In terms of the co-pay and the cost share, heck, I'm open to exploring that as well. To make it super short, I think to invest this kind of money into a program that we don't really know the full ramification or the need of is not being very responsible or disciplined in spending our money. I would like somehow to study it moving forward, leaving it the way it is, study it for a year, and determine whether we need to really invest this kind of money into it, but also look at the options of, and I brought it up last meeting, about an emergency rental assistance program, because if we truly want to help those folks stay housed, as well as helping our landlords, that would be a sure sign way of doing it, not, not this. This just prolongs the inevitable. It costs everybody more money, especially the landlords. And at the end of the day, if they get removed from the housing anyway, then what have we accomplished? Let's, let's look into the options or the possibilities of creating a emergency rental assistance program as we get a little more fluid and stable with our budget. Right now, we can all agree that it's probably a program that we can look into, but it's, it's not the time. We can look at other avenues to help both the landlord and the tenant. So that's my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Puzza.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks.
Thanks to staff and Betzettic for the staff report and to the public comments. I support a rent control and tenant protections ordinance. I think we have to find the sweet spot and the balance of power with the ordinance. We're finding and working towards that balance. I've always wanted to support those who are most vulnerable. However, it's also important to keep the right tension and the balance. So what we don't want is for our mom-and-pop landlords to sell to corporations, which would be devastating. I've recently met with several renters. I've also met with several landlords, who are all doing the best they can. I do think the right-to-counsel program could benefit the process as a whole. It might make the whole process go quicker. I still think it should be a pilot program, and I also think a program like this would benefit most when it's coupled with a rental assistance program, only for mom-and-pop landlords as defined in our ordinance. So both parties would have some sort of remedy and relief. You know, again, I'm supportive of right-to-counsel programs coupled with a rental assistance program. I believe in investing money in the front end, is less expensive on the back end, and we have to ensure, at the same time, that we are using the most effective tool. So I want what works best in Culver City, based on Culver City's data. However, I think we need to pump the brakes on new funding until after this special election. I would love to see the menu of options, as my colleague, Councilmember Fish, suggested. I'd love to, you know, also, we saw the number 272, it may be lower, because some of those may have been in LA, so that might adjust the total amount for the program. Look at options for co-pay that would be based on a scale. I'm open to studying, you know, let's look at mom-and-pop landlords and what's going on for them. More data on unlawful detainers. Reach out to the other tenant advocacy groups and look into what a rental assistance program could look like that would be coupled with this program. And to see maybe one or the other would be better, what is going to be best for, you know, our renters in the city, for everyone in the city. Because that's what I want, is at the end of the day, how are we going to resolve and balance and make sure that, you know, we address our housing crisis and that we still support, you know, our landlords. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, again, to our staff, and thanks sincerely to Betzettic for the work that you do. Really appreciate it, and had some really great comments from our community, and I appreciate it, and I took a lot of notes. The, I mean, the big thing that, the first thing that's coming to my mind, and knowing that, you know, housing insecurity is a real thing, I, for the first 10 years of my adult life, I was a renter, and I definitely had a period where I was doing the math on, you know, could I take showers at the Y and live in my car? So I know what that feels like. And I also listened to Mr. Lockoff's comment, and it reminded me of what I was thinking coming into the meeting after reading the report. I mean, we've heard it over and over tonight throughout, and the irony of talking about a fiscal emergency and then considering spending almost 20% of the proposed sales tax revenue on this one item. I know we're talking about, you know, looking at different versions of this. It might cost less, but it's still, you know, we're telling, we're telling the public that we need, we need you to pay more, and then we're adding something to our, to our expenditures, which is really, really hard to, I think, that'll make it hard to sell to the public quite a bit. I do agree that these decisions should be data-driven, and we don't know, it's really a big question mark, how many people are truly evicted. We don't, we don't know that number. We know the, the number of notices to vacate, but, or eviction notices, but we don't know how many actually get to that place. And knowing the number of 75% due to non-payment of rent, it really lends to the, the policy of offering short-term emergency catch-up rental assistance, and whatever policy has surrounded that, you know, limitations in duration of assistance. You know, I don't, I don't have the world, I can't fact-check a lot of the things we heard today, tonight, but, you know, if, I can imagine that the majority of, of non-payment of rent is due to kind of a one-time expense unforeseen, whether it be medical, or, or, you know, a car accident, or what have you. That's where rental assistance could quickly cure the situation and give that renter the ability to fix their, whatever their personal issue is that has created this hardship, and also keep them housed, not have them have to worry about court dates, not have to worry, not go to legal counsel meetings, not extending, you know, not having the landlord go without rent for months, probably. You know, all of the pain inflicted onto both sides in that, in that instance can be eliminated with, with a short-term rental assistance program. I do think we, again, to go back to it, I do think we need to find out what that data is before we even consider this, and base our decisions upon that. We can, we can have a better understanding of what, how many people truly need full-scope legal representation, if necessary. And, and I do like the idea that, that Mr. Kamali said, where, you know, okay, maybe they don't pay the full, whatever, $250 an hour for attorney services, but they do have a little bit of skin in the game to, you know, ensure that it's something that they truly need and are not just extending the pain. And we, we are committed to helping people. We're spending 16 million-plus a year on housing and human services. It's, and, and it's needed, and we are seeing a difference. So that's where I'm coming from with all of this. So I, I cannot vote to support the recommended motion, but I am willing to continue our contract with Betzettic as, as is, and they have done, I think, 19 cases full-service that we saw in the, in the report. Check out the data, you know, start acquiring all the data that we need, and I'd love to have staff come back and look, you know, with, with some sort of catch-up, short-term emergency rental assistance. Thank you. I mean, we can move forward with the motion if you want.
Thank you for your comments. I continue to support looking at our budget critically. If any of my colleagues, that was supported by my colleague, Councilmember McMoran, if any of my colleagues talking about our fiscal situation want to have that conversation again, I'm more than willing and happy to do that. Vice Mayor Puzza, would you be interested, I heard your comments about coupling this with a direct rental assistance program, and I also heard the mayor mention that, would you be interested in passing this ordinance as written, creating this program, but having staff come back with both, as you mentioned, so that we can see how we want to divvy up resources between these two as two tools, as two different strategies we can employ? You know, we saw the data that 75% of those eviction cases or those notices are for lapse in payment, so in the event that it might be more appropriate to use that tool, great. In the event that it might be more appropriate to use, that a, that a tenant would need a right to counsel, let's say they're getting evicted for some other cause, we would have that tool. So would you be interested in passing the ordinance, and I'm also asking the rest of my colleagues as well, coupled with asking staff to come back with a direct rental assistance program when we hear our renters protections update, which I know is planned, and then asking for options in terms of budget, at different budget levels, for the right-to-counsel program, different providers and different levels of service that we could start with? I'm more concerned about just creating the program as a start, knowing that, you know, our belts are tight right now, and allowing us to have this as something that we can continue to invest in as, as our future financial prospects hopefully look sunnier.
But what if the data, what if the data says that the rental assistance program is better and more effective? So what, wouldn't it make more sense to just bring back all the data and the options and then make the decision based on that?
I'm open to, well, I'm open to creating the program, which doesn't actually direct funding to it at this point. It just allows the city to have the mechanism, says we're doing this, and then we can do exactly what you said, which is, we have both buckets, we can see what the data shows. We, we already see that 75%.
So you want to create a right-to-counsel program, a rental assistance program?
I'm, I'm going off of your comments, which were, it sounded like you were saying both of these are something you'd be interested in, but, but understanding the balance between them, am I misinterpreting?
I want, no, I'll be clear. I want to, I think that we need, I would love to see all the information and for staff to come back with a menu of options to see, because I want to make a data-driven decision. So I'd like to see, you know, information about both of the options, information about a co-pay, more data on unlawful detainers, and then we can go forward from there.
Follow-up question with staff. I mean, the current program, although it doesn't provide it for everyone because of bandwidth, we had 19 cases that received full service, correct? So, so we do have a program, it's just not, not everyone has access to it. And that is essentially a, a, a lower-funded program would do a similar thing. Not everyone presumably would have access to it. I mean, depending upon the data, I, I agree with Vice Mayor Puzza that if we have data, we have a better grasp on what the need is. But there are, in the prior fiscal year, or maybe not fiscal year, but year-to-date, 19 people who did receive full service. Obviously, not every, from people that you've spoken to, Councilmember Fish, not everyone has received it who has requested it due to the bandwidth. But I, I'm in favor of what Vice Mayor Puzza is recommending. Mayor, is there a motion on the table?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion, if I can, to pass the ordinance as written. It does not direct any funding to this program, but it intend, it states the intent to establish a right to counsel, or it states a creation of a right-to-counsel program, which we can fund at our discretion, and the motion would also be coupled with a direct rental assistance. We can, we can ask staff to come back with information on a direct rental assistance program, exactly what was just mentioned, and we can decide how the funding can be allocated to both. So the only difference here is passing the ordinance in front of us, which just allows us to create the shell, the program, and shows that we are, that our intent is to establish a right to counsel. And so that's, that's my motion. And I would also love to include whether, in this motion, we can explore the other items that we could potentially ask to be reported, such as the UDs and the, I'm forgetting the last one, the last step. The UDs and the notice to vacate. So those are the things I'm hoping to put into this motion, and let me know if that's unclear.
So is there a motion on the floor?
Can we repeat it back? Because I know.
Oh, I have to press the motion.
Can you repeat back the motion, please, or city clerk, just for clarity?
I have adoption of an interim ordinance establishing a tenant right-to-counsel program for a period of 12 months and exploring other items for data.
Explore, so it would be passing the ordinance for the, as written, for the tenant right-to-counsel program, and requesting that staff return with information about both the tenant right-to-counsel program and the direct rental assistance program, the need for both, so that the council can determine how to allocate resources to those two programs.
And can you include, or any, you know, any relevant data that, that staff or Betzettic has that might provide a bit more insight to the needs of the Culver City community, since there's so much interest from my colleagues around data, which I'm really joyful about, and hopeful that we can continue making data-driven decisions? And I'm sorry, I'm going to ask if it could be read back one more time from the city clerk, just to make sure that we have it correct.
Adoption of an interim ordinance establishing a tenant right-to-counsel program for a period of 12 months, and have staff return with data regarding both the right-to-counsel and rental assistance needs for consideration.
And I just want to reiterate, I'm still open to understanding what comes back and allocating as we see from the data where the, where the greatest needs are, where we can make the biggest impact. So I still very much appreciate that input, and, and I agree.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Fish, and a second by Councilmember McMoran. That motion fails. No's from Mayor O'Brien and Councilmember Vera, and one abstained from Vice Mayor Puzza.
So moving to the second concept, should we, should we direct staff to ask for these two, these two?
Data sets.
Concepts, these two concepts, these two renters protection concepts, I guess, to be, are we analyzing them, we're analyzing the impact of both of them? And, and is that?
I'd like to know.
Just the same thing without passing the ordinance, basically? Is that what we're, what we're asking for?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're going to seek to pull data on the, on the actual evictions. evictions and the, what's the term?
Co-pay?
Yeah. And then I, I'd like to look at, you know, what does a, a short-term kind of catch-up emergency rental assistance program look like?
So did you all, did you all get, was that clear? So two programs, we're, we're asking staff to come back with two programs, the right to counsel, as you already have, and the direct rental assistance program, with a way for us to analyze both programs where our resources could be best spent for those programs, so that we can consider that for the budget process this summer? How do you, okay.
Does that include seeking proposals from other service providers?
Yes.
So that would be an aspect of it. And then seeing what, what data we can collect about actual evictions in Culver City? That's what I'm hearing. Okay.
And that, and that, I, I know you mentioned, and Betzettic was able to pull aggregated data. I mean, we don't need individually, necessarily individual. I mean, if we, if there's a way to get aggregated or if it's through our existing, well, we'd have to update our, our rental registry to, to get that data from the landlords directly, right?
And can we include, are, are you all open to including in this motion the, the two data sort, the two notices that we're lacking, asking for those to come back as well? The UDs and the notice to vacate, okay.
We would have to study whether legally we could require that as part of our rent control and tenant protections program.
That's just direction. You'll need, yeah.
One last thing on this item.
Yeah.
Earlier during the presentation, I neglected to thank our rent stabilization coordinator, Shannon Lewis, who is on vacation tonight. She did so much behind-the-scenes work. She put together the presentation and the staff report, so all credit where credit's due.
Thanks to Shannon. Thank you. Yeah, it's great. There's a lot of, a lot of detail Okay. Do we have any, are you ready, City Clerk? Sorry.
Yeah.
Do we have any comments on the problem?
We have, yeah, we have public comments for items not on the agenda. First, we have Okay, he's not online and he's not here. So we're going to move on to the next speaker. That's Denise Neal. She is here.
Good evening once more, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers and community at large. I wanted to bring to your attention, if you're not fully aware right now, that there's a major exodus happening with our bus drivers. And I know that the buses are important to you as far as bringing in revenue. Is there a way you can look into what's actually occurring and figuring out a way to stop our drivers from leaving? I mean, people who have had tenure, people who know that there are full-time positions available that are not being hired into them. I don't know if it's because of the structural deficit, you know, with the budget, but it's, it's impacting our city right now. We don't have enough drivers and the few that are still here are overworked and they don't care anymore, some of them are telling me. So is there a way you can investigate what's really happening so we can save our bus system? Thank you.
Okay. Any last comments from councilmembers?
None for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's for McMoran.
Thanks. I have a couple of requests. This, the first, well, actually, three are return attempts. So last summer, I think, or last August, I agendized, I think it was in the 12th meeting, I agendized a conversation or a discussion with CCPD as it pertains to the type of calls received and if we could start to collect data on those type of calls. And we did get a presentation, but it's, it seems to be on the tracker as completed. And I don't know where we ended up with how we're tracking the types of calls. We do have the number of calls, but not what type of calls. So I would really like to have a conversation about collecting data on the type of calls that are received by our police department. So I wanted to bring that up for discussion again.
Looking for three nodding heads. I see a nodding head from Councilmember Fish, Vice Mayor Pusa, and Councilmember McMoran.
Thank you. I'm also asking for, again, for the state of emergency language to come back. I think it somehow got completed with the regular report out. That was a bit delayed this year, but I would like to bring back the state, the homelessness state of emergency language for discussion.
Can I get clarification? Do you mean the?
The language of the ordinance, yeah.
Okay. The proclamation of state of emergency.
Exactly.
And I just want to make sure I got the right number of nodding heads. I saw the mayor, I saw Fish and, okay, Pusa, okay. Thank you.
Okay. This is also something that I brought up last year, but trying again for having a conversation about how we as a city are supporting women and girls. Mount St. Mary's just recently put out their annual Women and Girls Report for Women's History Month, and they produce one annually. And there's a ton of, well, not a ton, but there are cities and county and state initiatives to evaluate city processes and supports for women and girls in leadership. So I'd like to bring that back for a conversation about how we could intentionally, as a city, either through a formal committee, commissioner board, and/or just be cognizant about how we as a city are investing in women and girls. So I'd like to have that conversation in 2025.
I have a nodding head from Councilmember Fish and Pusa. So all three of those have received consensus.
Thank you. I do have just one more. This might not get, get support, but in the, in the quest, just overall amplification of the budget process we have through various elected official networks, young elected officials, local progress and other bodies, where elected officials from around the nation come together and talk about what's happening in our cities through sort of talking about the, the lack of movement on, well, maybe not lack of movement, but lack of shifts to how we deal with our budget processing in Culver City. I had a conversation with the Chair of the Budget Committee in Nashville of all places, and they were willing to share with me their budget questionnaire, which asked just, I could kind of go over them, but I'd be really interested in having a conversation about, I could really quickly just, it's just a general worksheet, but it would end up streamlining, I think. So let me take a step back and, and City Attorney stop me at any time. But sometimes when we get presentations, they're a little, each department head is presenting what they feel is the best, you know, presentation from their department, which is absolutely fine. But again, it's difficult to compare apples to apples because everyone is not responding to the same set of information. So for example, just to kind of run down like the first three. So it says, does like in the past budget year, did it enable, did the budget enable your department or office to satisfactorily fulfill its mission? If not, why? Number two, provide a brief description of your current fiscal year budget modifications and requests. So that's not really a deviation from some of the work that is done. Provide a brief description of the budget modifications, again, not a, you know, not a huge deviation from some of the information that is occasionally provided. If applicable, provide a itemized list of your requested funding increases. And, you know, there are other things that are included in this, but again, just trying to open, open the door, crack the door a little bit into how we evaluate and support our department leads in sharing information to the public and with the council. So it would be a discussion about one example of how folks are collecting information from their budget departments to kind of better understand what is happening in a more streamlined and uniform way. So it's a series of 10 questions.
I'm sorry, I, I just need a little more information on exactly what you want us to bring back the discussion of, the 10 questions, or have a discussion about?
So it's, it would be about how we deal with our budget process. And this is one approach of, every department fills out this questionnaire. They even have a really cool equity piece of it. That is something that some department chair out on, but again, it allows a bit more uniformity in terms of the, the sharing from each department. Yeah.
Okay, so it's just discuss budget process approaches?
It's a budget questionnaire document. So I don't know if it's a budget approach, but if that's what that falls into.
Maybe an exercise?
Yeah, maybe it's, maybe it's an exercise.
Budget exercise?
So you want to bring back a discussion of this specific exercise?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
And we have nodding heads from Councilmember Fish and Vice Mayor Pusa.
And I'll share, I'll just forward the email that she sent to me to City Clerk's team.
Great.
That's it for me. Thank you.
That's for Vera. That's for her. Okay, nothing for me. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Pusa, a second by Councilmember Vera to adjourn. Please vote. All members have voted. The time is 11:31 and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.